Everyone, call the order. We have a quorum. Could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the February thirteenth, October, uh, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Ojai City Council. Weston, would you please say the pledge for us?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you.
Would everyone please rise as you are able? Our flag is in the back of the room here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. And I'm just gonna make a few comments before we begin. So let's everybody take a deep breath, take a deep inhale, exhale, and let's remember that we're all connected and that we're all here because we love our town and care about the issues that affect Ojai. Let's also remember that city council meetings are the city's board meetings, and it's time for us to do business and give direction to staff so that they can do their work. We are blessed with an incredibly hardworking and caring staff, so thank you very much, staff. That said, we are also a very small city and thus have a very small staff. We need to respect their time and give them the opportunity to complete their work. We must also create and maintain an atmosphere at our meetings in which we can attend to business productively, fairly, and civilly. I ask that we all strive to be our most gracious selves and focus on policies versus personalities. To that end, please turn off your phones. If you need to talk, please go outside. Please refrain from any side conversations, yelling, clapping, snapping, and of course booing. It takes only one-fifth of a second for human beings to go into fight or flight and twenty minutes to recover. So let's not do that to each other. If there are disruptions from individuals or groups, I will issue a warning. If the warning goes unheeded, the Chief of Police, thank you, Chief Newman, thank you for being here, will escort the individual or group out of the meeting. We do not want to have to do this. I'm asking that each one of us practices self-control and respect for others and the process so that the meeting can be productive and efficient. Everyone deserves to be heard. Thank you for your understanding and modeling the behavior that we want to see in the world. Thank you. We will move on to public communications. And just a reminder, we'll take, uh, oh, I'm so sorry, so excited to move forward. Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt. So we will move on to, uh, general public communications. And just a reminder, we take thirty minutes and then we move to the first agenda item and then we will return. So we will take, uh, ten to begin with. Uh, these are items not on the agenda, and because they are not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation, and we can agendize items for the future. At the end of the three minutes, you will hear a chime as a gentle reminder that your time is up, and in the spirit of equity so that everyone gets equal time, the mic will be deactivated when the chime goes off. There's no giving away time to another speaker. If you're in agreement with a previous person, please just say ditto. We encourage speakers to state their names and addresses before speaking. This is also the time to allow the council to become informed. Kindly refrain from any side conversations or ambient noise while people are speaking. We need quiet so that we can hear each other. Even if we disagree, let's show each speaker respect by deep listening. We are all here because we care about our community. The community includes all the people here, in the audience, on the dais, and behind the scenes. While we won't agree with each other on everything, we all need to come from a place of mutual respect, consideration, and civility. Please limit your comments to items that are the city's business. This is important because we want to focus on issues and concerns that are within the city's jurisdiction and where the city is able to effectively respond and make an impact. Think of the city council meetings as a board meeting for the municipal corporation, one that focuses on streets, side, well, it takes approximately seven times for people to actually, to listen, so that's to learn something, seven times. One that focuses on streets, sidewalks, local public safety, land use, recreation, et cetera. Everyone on the city council understands that there are a host of important issues facing our country and world. That is clear. We would like to focus here in this meeting on matters within the city's control and influence. We need to spend time working out to improve the quality of life in Ojai, which is why all of us are here. Thank you for allowing me this moment to provide some framework, and thank you for your participation and interest in the city of Ojai. We are here because we care about our community, which includes each of us, and that's a beautiful thing. Thank you for listening. So we'll begin with the first ten.
May I make a quick comment? I think it's important that the things you said are important, but they're yours. They're not speaking for the whole council.
And I'm running the meeting, and I've talked considerably with staff on that issue, so thank you for your input. All right, let's begin with, can I just remind everyone to go through? So before you speak, can you ask?
Microphone, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, is that on the agenda, the mayor's opening statement? Does it need to be on the agenda? It's just simply a question of protocol. I understand a brief comment is appropriate, but a seven-minute-type statement may or may not be. So I am asking the city attorney, um, it's not agendized, does it need to be?
It wasn't an agenda item. The mayor's comments leading in a general public comment are the agenda item which is on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's begin with Ron Solarsino from the library, then Carol Wade, and then Carl Hindman.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, members of council. My name is Ron Solarsino, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. I'm here today to give you just a quick update on some of what we have going on at the Ojai Library. First, I'd like to mention an event coming up in a few weeks at the library. Author Jay Andre Bowles is going to visit the Ojai Library at 2:00 PM on Saturday, March 2nd, to talk about his books, Monster on Gypsy Hill and Piercing the Lion Heart. Bowles is an ex-cop, ex-lawyer, and award-winning true crime author who seeks new readers and listeners to entertain with his tales of chasing bad guys, exonerating the innocent, and calling out those who abuse power. Next, I want to highlight an upcoming series of craft activities that are gonna be happening at the Ojai Library. These will be at 2:30 PM on Sundays in March, April, and May. These are, uh, we're calling them our new Wonder Workshop Craft Programs. These are weekly sessions facilitated by library staff, uh, who will assist our adult customers with projects including crochet, visible mending, and coptic bookbinding. This is a drop-in program with no registration required. There may be some, uh, limit on supplies, uh, so feel free to, uh, come in early if you're able. But yes, this is a craft program focused mostly on our adult customers, um, though as I'm sure some of you are aware, we have plenty of craft activities for the young ones as well. Uh, next, I wanna highlight for you, uh, just as a reminder, that the Ojai Library has an ongoing partnership with the Workforce Development Board of Ventura County, and that through this partnership, uh, the Ventura County Works Program has been offering free one-on-one career, uh, coaching at the Ojai Library. The coaching is free, there is no registration required, and drop-ins are welcome. These are sessions that are, uh, meant to be a way of encouraging job seekers to take the first steps towards a fulfilling career. In addition, we are also offering, uh, coaching sessions, uh, actually, I'm sorry, we are offering the coaching section sessions weekly on Thursdays from 2:00 to 4:00, and then we are also offering special workshops on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. The special workshops focus on various topics that are essential for job seekers in the twenty-first century. In addition to that, uh, particular career counseling program, I also wanna let you all know that we, of course, still have the Ventura County Library's Free Adult Literacy Program, uh, which is called Read Adult Literacy, the goal of which is to help adults improve their reading and writing skills so that they perceive a positive impact on their lives in such areas as self-esteem, employment, family life, and community involvement. This program is always open to new tutors and learners all throughout the county, including the Ojai Valley. That's all that I have for right now. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions at all, please reach out to the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, next we have Carol Wade, then Carl Hindman, and then Tony Records.
Hello. My name is Carol Wade. I am a citizen of Ojai for twenty-five years. I live at 214 Drown Avenue. I am thankful to be here, and I'm here again. Many of you may recognize my face, and you'll certainly hear my mess, the same message that I've been giving. I'm going to begin by giving some context to make very clear that this is a very relevant issue for the city of Ojai and for all of the citizens of Ojai, certainly for my children, certainly for my grandson. So I'm going to be reading some information that you may have seen or been familiar with, but it will give context to all of the information that we're gonna be talking about. The world's largest weapons manufacturer dealer, the Ojai Valley's crown jewel, Ojai Valley Inn, is owned by the Crown family. The, they're the thirty-fourth richest family in the world. They're worth ten point eight billion dollars. Nearly sixty-five cent percent of their net worth, which is about eighty-seven billion dollars, comes from their majority stake in General Dynamics. General Dynamics is the sixth-largest weapons dealer in the world. Ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of the bombs falling on families and children in Palestine come from General Dynamics. They also fall on Yemen, on Syria, and Lebanon. They are manufactured in America. They're paid by Americans. I am an American. I pay tax dollars. A lot of our tax money goes toward paying for these, these weapons and for funding this, this war. MK-848, two-thousand-pound dumb bombs, which are non-guided free-fall bombs, BLU-109, AKA bunker buster bombs, which are two-thousand-pound warheads, are Israel's weapon of genocide. Thirty thousand-plus people in four months have died. Thirteen thousand of those people are children. One child is killed every ten minutes. It's hard for me to read this without crying, so please pardon me. Or no, don't pardon me, just, no. Two mothers die every hour. Israel has dropped more than twenty-five thousand tons of explosives, uh, explosives on the Gaza Strip since October 7th. That's, that's the equivalent of two nuclear bombs. Two nuclear bombs. That's the kind of destruction that's being wrought on this land, which is a small, relatively small piece of land. This, this information comes from the Euromed Human Rights Monitor. So here we go on this story of sorts.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, next we have Carol Hindman, Carl Hindman, then Tony Records, then Robin Gerber.
Carl Hindman, I live near, in, in Miners Oaks. Um, I appreciate that opening statement that was, uh, from the mayor. It, it really hopefully sets the tone for the way we speak from now on. Um, one thing that I certainly hope that people, uh, don't continue is things like lawfare and slap lawsuits. A few months ago, I spoke before the lawsuit was brought against one of our council members and her attorney, and I had a solution that would have saved people a lot of money. I said, drop the lawsuit. Now, seven citizens of our, ostensibly of our city, I don't know how many of them are residents, they filed a lawsuit, and I'm not sure what their purpose was. Um, I think they paid for their attorney, who may have, somebody may have given them the advice that this is the way a democracy works, but it's really not. You don't use lawfare. You know what happens with lawfare is the defendant has to go and hire an attorney, and it's very expensive. I wouldn't want someone filing a lawsuit against me. I'm so happy, Leslie, what happened. And I read in the paper, and I think you all did, that there is approximately seventy-eight, eighty-thousand dollars that may be awarded to the defendants for their legal fees. Who's paying that? The plaintiffs have to pay that. Who advised the plaintiffs to file this suit? That's not how a democracy works. Who authorized, who, who advised them? I was here, they should have listened to me. I said, drop the lawsuit. You know how much eighty thousand dollars is, seventy thousand dollars is divided by seven people? That's ten thousand dollars. Do you know that I've talked to the attorney representing Ms. Rule, and you know that they're going to file liens on their property, possibly? They may garnish their wages? Now, why would these citizens want to lose ten thousand dollars, and what is the purpose of the lawsuit? I don't understand. I'm confused. Anybody that wants to, to, to talk to me and explain it to me, I'm, I'm happy to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next we have Tony Records, then Robin Gerber, then Chris Barton.
Hi, my name is Tony Records, and I live in Ojai. I'm here today to address the council about an issue that, to my knowledge, has yet to been discussed by the council, the presence of a gun shop in our community. And the shop is located in the True Value Hardware Store at the iconic Ojai at the corner of Maricopa Highway and East Ojai Avenue. It is a shopping center with Von's Supermarket, Pets 'n' More, and next door to a restaurant, and other small businesses, all frequented by adults and children. It is also less than a half a mile from the Nordhoff High School in one direction and Ojai Valley School in the other. It is a full-service gun shop to include the sale of various weapons, including personal protection weapons, hunting and target rifles. It also sells various pistols and handguns, ammunition, and gun accessories. The CDC reports that the firearms injuries were the leading cause of death among children and teens aged one to nineteen in 2020 and 2021. In 2021, the most recent year for which complete data, data are available, forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty people died from gun-related injuries in the U.S. I can go on and on, but I'm sure you're well aware of the danger of proliferation of easily accessible guns presents to our community. California is one of the few states that allows governments such as Ojai broad latitude to enact laws to protect their communities from gun violence. Some possible laws could include, one, require safety, safe firearm storage in the home, two, prohibiting guns at demonstrations and protest, three, require regular inspections of gun dealer premises, four, prohibiting unaccompanied minors and prohibited persons from entering gun stores, five, requiring gun dealers to report their inventory to local law enforcement. What I'm asking you to do regarding this issue, govern, conduct hearings, and listen to concerns and ideas of our citizens, research current requirements, investigate options, propose changes in zoning ordinances or other requirements, appoint a commission or review body, or, God forbid, all of the above. This issue is too important to become devoured in a bureaucratic maze. Thoughts and prayers, the response is assured on gun policy is simply not acceptable. I stand ready to volunteer in any way in this issue I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Can I ask, Tony, can we have, can you submit that as a comment to the city? I'd like to see a copy of what you just said.
How about this one?
Yeah, yeah, if you have an extra copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, next we have Robin Gerber, then Chris Barton, and then Austin Ringlestein.
Hi, I'm Robin Gerber. I live here in Ojai. Welcome, Mr. Harvey. Uh, in one of the most embarrassing discussions I have ever heard at the council, you voted in June of 2023 to deny indemnification to Ms. Rule for the frivolous lawsuit that was just mentioned and was brought, that was brought against her by some valley residents despite clear legal language stating that a city council member, in the course of doing their job, should be indemnified. Nevertheless, you voted to hang her out to dry for legal costs, ironically accusing her of being malicious and her intent as your excuse. Put aside the fact that malicious has a specific meaning in law. None of you can read each other's minds now or then. Your personal opinion of each other should have no place in your judgments on this council. You have set a horrible precedent by denying indemnification because of your feelings about Ms. Rule and her actions. Hopefully, none of you will get sued and have to deal with what she's had to deal with. Now we know, less than a year later, a superior court judge has gone out of his way to show you how wrong you were. The lawsuit brought by Sabrina Venskus has not only been ruled frivolous, the mean-spirited group who brought it now owe seventy-eight thousand dollars to reimburse Ms. Rule for her legal costs. In making the fee judgment, the judge went out of his way again. To say that Ms. Rule had every right to speak her piece in the Venskus lawsuit was a prohibited attempt to shut her up. You should indemnify her immediately, and the city will recover its costs, as it should, from the people who tried to stifle free speech on this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next we have Chris Barton, then Austin Ringlestein, and then Nuri Ranagi.
Thanks for hearing us. Continuing from Carol. Um, the storied Ojai Valley Inn is a favorite retreat for A-listers in search of peace, tranquility, wellness, and a little woo-woo magic. It is iconic and seen as the centerpiece of this idealistic small town. But there is a darker truth behind the gates, a truth that cuts to the core of colonialism, military industrialism, and global brutality, a violent privilege from which our country and our town benefits. The Crown family purchased the inn in nineteen eighty-five and poured fifty million into it. From that moment on, Ojai's financial interests have been tied to a war profiteering family whose ten-point-eight-billion-dollar net worth comes from the deaths of millions and the massive destruction of the environment worldwide. The Crown family has been a key player in the occupation of Palestine, both funding and arming Israel's military and infrastructure for seventy-five years. In the early nineteen fifties, Henry Crown famously broke trade embargoes to smuggle military components to Israel. After World War II, the Crown family's company, Material Service Corp., merged with General Dynamics. As a result, the Crown family became one of the largest armed dealers in the world, but mere financial success itself was never the endgame. The Crown family's goals have always been tied to Zionist power, colonialism, and a deep need to control the world stage. The cost, eighty percent of Ojai's budget comes from transient occupant, occupancy tax, tourism, and forty percent of that money comes from the Ojai Valley Inn. Wealthy tourism is the bread and butter of Ojai Valley Inn and has therefore become Ojai's main lifeblood. But this is a system that takes from Ojai and feeds the wealthy war profiteers. It's a closed loop of wealth that is choking us. We have become a playland, an extended backyard for the Crown family, a place to wash their billions made from brutally murdering generations and poisoning the earth with bombs and weapons of destruction. Meanwhile, Ojai is in the midst of a housing crisis, and across the country, people are barely holding on. One-third of all U.S. households are paying more than fifty percent of their income to just have a roof over their heads. War is making us poor while simultaneously making the rich richer. According to financial analysts, this decade will produce its first trillionaire in the U.S., and this will be from war profiteering. The wealthiest among us are those deeply invested in genocide. They cannot let peace happen as their way of life is so tied to the continuation and escalation of war. War crimes, environmental devastation, unprecedented humanitarian crises, and the suffering is what they feed off of. These merchants of death put their greed above the survival of humanity.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, next we have Austin Ringlestein, and then Nuri Ranagi, and then Eva Cristofalo Fernandez.
Thank you. My name is Austin Ringlestein. Many of you might know that I'm a military veteran. I was in the bomb squad in Iraq on several deployments to the Middle East. I just want, have a question for everybody in the room to contemplate. One of the joys that I have in my life is getting to look into my two-year-old's eyes and watch his eyes shine, like him walking at me today when I picked him up at school in, at Miners Oaks Elementary. It, it makes my life every time, and he's the joy of my wife and I in this town. And I'm gonna give a trigger warning because, um, I think everyone can identify with the love that they have for their children, or having been a child themselves, having parents. Um, the trigger warning is, is not to be, um, extra, but to show that, you know, sometimes we're sitting here in our cozy town, and we don't literally get to understand what's happening in the world. There's literally children's limbs hanging from fences and buildings in Gaza because of bombs dropped by the people who are funding those bombs in this town. I've personally actually disarmed, uh, through detonation, Mark eighty-series bombs, which ironically, I didn't know until now, were probably produced by the Crown family. At this point, it's insulting to hear anyone say that this is not Ojai City Council's business. How many more people will be murdered with Ojai blood money until we at least get a vote on a ceasefire in Gaza? That's our democratic responsibility. I've been up here four times, uh, away from my family, asking, pleading, and crying for this. I'm gonna try something a little different. When Ojai money, excuse me, Ojai, an international city of peace, but is it peace if it's when we please? Ojai, an international city of peace, just not when there's war in the Middle East. Why does a city of peace need more police? Why does a city of peace make it their own interest to receive the Crown's business? When Ojai money is used to bomb a family, and you say it is not a local issue, how can you not see your own hypocrisy? Your silence is complicity. Ojai, an international city of peace, no, there's no peace until they cease fire and release hostages and prisoners. A ceasefire resolution is the only solution that will set us all free.
Thank you, Austin. Next we have Nuri Ranagi, uh, then Eva Cristofal Fernandez, and then Maria Rosa Cristofal Fernandez.
Hello. I'm Nuri Ranagi. You all know me.
Please adjust the microphone.
I can pass this to you. Reminds me of my grandchildren. And you can look at them. Three, four months old. Three years old. Nedda and Linsong. They were killed. This is a few of thirteen thousand children in four months. Our money, our politic, are killing them. Seventy cities in the United States passed a resolution, including Los Angeles, San Francisco, so many in California. I want to ask, how do you feel? Howard Zinn, the historian, says, has a book, Our History. You cannot be neutral on a moving train. This is a moving train. You are with them or with these children trying to save them, like seventy other cities. You got to tell me, as my representative, where are you? You got to tell me, as my representative, where are you? Where are you? Really, how do you feel? I'm asking everybody. I'm asking you. I'm asking you. How could you not, the minimum that you can do for peace and humanity, not to do? What is your answer? Tell me. You are representing me.
Thank you, Nuri. Next, we have Eva Cristofalo Fernandez, and then Nuria Rosa Cristofalo Fernandez.
My name is Eva Cristofalo Fernandez. I've come and spoken to you a couple of times now. This is a picture of Hind Rajab, who you may have heard, as she cried for help, as her family was murdered, and as she was sitting in a car terrified beyond anything that any of us have ever had to deal with. I don't have my own words. This is... This is our child. Please come. Please help me. Please save me. Are you coming? I can't come now. We're trying to send somebody. Are there gunshots happening around you? Yes? Okay, we'll send someone as soon as we can. Some of you might have heard the longer version, where that woman helping her had to hear the sound of the bomb that was dropped. A bomb that was dropped after the rest of her family had already been killed. Fifteen-year-old cousin, Layan Hamada. And then, when the Red Crescent had made an agreement to come save this barely six-year-old girl from having to sit there with her dead family all around her. Yusuf Zaino and Ahmed Al Madun, two brave, heartfelt young men who knew what they were risking, and they were bombed to death trying to save her. Here's the call. While she was sitting beside her cousin, her cousin saying, "Please come and save us." We're in the car. The tank is next to us. This is children and their family being murdered that we had to hear? Oh, so stressful to have to hear this. Can you imagine that their bodies sat rotting in that car, that Hind sat in that car until she bled out and died? I am tired of saying we are all parents here, the ones of us that are. We're all uncles and aunties. might seem an insignificant thing, but then why is it being so hard that it's being fought against? Seventy other cities recognized it has meaning.
Thank you, Eva. Next, we have Nuria Rosa Cristofalo Fernandez.
My name is Nuria Rosa Cristofalo Fernandez. I'm a high school student here in Ojai. Water welling up in my eyes as I listen to the last words of Hind Rajab, begging for help, pleading for someone to come rescue her from the backseat of a car filled with the bodies of her motionless relatives. Droplets fall onto my lap. Hind's screams mixed with the sound of machine gun fire. Line cuts, silence. Twelve days her body lay in the car before being brought to her mother's arms, dead. Salty tears run down my cheeks watching lifeless children, babies, being wrapped in plastic sheets. I feel my heart break into more and more pieces as I listen to their mothers' screams, cries, and prayers. My face glistens, tears catching the light of the phone. This is the first time a genocide has been documented in real time for the world to see. And yet, those in power turn a blind eye. If I were in your places, I would do anything and everything in my power to stop this genocide that is playing out right in front of our eyes. But you sit here and do nothing, caring more about your image than human life. Are you human beings? If you have any humanity in you, you would stand on the right side of history and do the bare minimum by passing a ceasefire resolution in Ojai, city of peace.
Thank you, Nuria. We will move on to the consent calendar and return to public comment after our first item. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I want to pull... Could we have a pause? And just, you know, it's... So we transition back to this. I don't know how we can deeply listen and not be deeply affected, but, okay. So I am pulling Item D off the consent calendar, the ratification of the Ojai Arts Commission grants.
Councilmember Rule, you wanted to pull something?
Yeah, I'd like to... Excuse me. I'd like to pull C, please. Okay. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
I'll move to approve A and B.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of approving A and B?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to C.
Yes. So this came from requests from constituents of mine to amend the minutes on... for December 20th. They would like more detail. Specifically, they have requested that... Who vote... They request that the vote to suspend the rules actually specify who voted how. So... And they are questioning whether or not that was a motion, and, you know, if it was, was it formal? And I don't have the answers to these questions. That's why I'm bringing it to the table or to the dais. So was it a literal vote to suspend the rules to allow a speaker to have more time? And if so, is that an official motion? And if so, should it have specified that it was and who actually voted for it? So they would like that clarification, as well as I have... They have requested a summary of the 28 minutes that occurred between 7:07 and 7:35, and as it wasn't a closed session, what exactly was it and what decisions were made? And how did that vote come about? In other words, this is way too vague for a handful of my constituents, and they would like clarity on, you know, transparency on what actually occurred. And they would like it to be in the minutes as to who voted to allow someone extra time because we say every time that, you know, everyone should have... must have equal time. That's except for the council can vote to allow someone, you know, additional time. But they would like that in the minutes. So that is my request for the minutes of December 20th, based on constituents' letters to me concerning that.
Through the mayor, I can speak to one part. If it is the direction of council to add the... I believe it was the consent reached through the mayor, through then Mayor Pro Tem Francina to grant some additional time for that one speaker. And if it is the direction of the council to add that to the minutes, that's possible. I would like to ask City Attorney Summers about the recess of the meeting, which was the second part of the question.
Yeah, we can add more detail if the council wants, but I would note that the video is the best evidence of it, especially such a chaotic scene. The video is always our best evidence of the meetings. So the video can stand on its own. We can add that line, "As I recall, it was a request by Mayor Pro Tem Francina to allow the speaker at the time to have more time." The council consented to it without a formal vote. It didn't need a formal vote in that moment because it wasn't contested by any other member of council. Had any contested... Had that been contested, we would have taken a formal vote. It wasn't contested at that moment. So then it was consensus that allowed that additional time. That's unanimous. That then led that speaker to create the disruption that resulted in the recess for security purposes. The council then recessed out. I'm not done. The council then recessed out, and there was no closed session because there was no closed session. Security considerations were assessed. The council returned, and the meeting, as we all know on the video, the meeting was ended with the statement made by the mayor. We can put all that in the minutes if desired.
Yeah, I think that it warrants it. I think that that particular council meeting warrants as much detail and as much transparency, no matter where you stand on it, in the minutes. So that, as a historical record, if nothing else. I know that we have a video, but we don't really have a video of what happened in the back room and what decisions were made and things like that. And they were made outside of the public purview, but yet they were not closed session. So it's a gray area. So my vote would be for more transparency as to what occurred, although, once again, this is all new to me. So I am asking for, you know, advice from other council folks or anyone, perhaps the city manager can chime in on this. That would be great.
Through the mayor, I just want council to be aware that I have instructed the city clerk going forward to go to what is known as action minutes, which is consistent with what the city attorney is describing. The video is the record, and because we don't, as a city, ever want to be in a position of mischaracterizing what somebody may say during a public comment, it's better just to list those who made those comments, and the video speaks for itself. And so that is the best practice. So you're going to see minutes going forward. They're going to be more scant in the public comment section simply because we, again, don't want to be trying to characterize what somebody was talking about. We just want to list their name if they choose to give it and then allow the video to stand as the record. So I hope that adds some context here. Thank you.
A quick follow-up, if I could. So... And I certainly agree that in comments, you know, you don't need to sort of translate or put your own spin... You know, however it turns out, when you, you know, reiterate someone's comments, you inevitably add an overlay of editorial. It's just the nature of what happens. Not deliberate editorial, but it's just the nature of... There's an overlay. But that doesn't really speak to the idea of the decisions that council makes. And so if it is indeed consensus, so that it was unanimous, it was unanimous vote that the speaker be allowed extra time, that's fine. But I think that should actually be in there, and this council may not, as I did not, my first council meeting, understand that if I didn't raise my hand and say no, de facto, I was saying yes. And a consensus means nobody has to take responsibility for the vote because it was a consensus. So... But I didn't understand that, and I think the public doesn't understand that as well. So I think it's important that they do understand that, given that I have had comments from constituents. And finally, I think also what did happen, the decisions that were made in the back room, they do warrant some sort of comment, whatever that may be. We came out, and a decision had been made, right? So an action happened. And so, you know, that would be my only comment. I don't feel the need to reiterate what, you know, public comments, for sure, I understand that, but... Oh, okay. I will take that as a cue to pass it on.
Through the mayor, we're happy to prepare revised minutes for December 20th. We suggest moving forward the other sets.
Thank you so much, and indeed, I do. And I just want to say thank you to the constituents who did reach out to me and ask me for clarification. I felt the need to do so.
All right. Let's move on to...
Before we move on, so we take a vote on the other minutes, and we'll continue the 20th.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the other minutes. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Except for D.
Yes. Okay. Let's move on to Item Number D. We do have two public comments, so we'll go ahead and take them now.
So I'm going to...
Can I make just an introductory remark for those who weren't here?
Maybe let Mayor... Councilmember Whitman go first, I think.
Yeah, let me go first. I've had a consultation with Attorney Summers, and he has indicated to me that I don't have a technical conflict of interest, but I do not feel comfortable voting on a matter in which a family member potentially is or is not going to be awarded grant money. It's not going to go into their pocket, but it is going to be a program that they run. So I'm going to abstain. I'm going to step away from the dais while you guys consider Item D.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Francina?
Okay. What we're discussing now is, at the last council meeting, I pulled from the consent calendar an item where we were supposed to ratify the Arts Commission grants. And I did that at the last meeting, and then after some discussion, and I expressed concerns that the process used this time was not as public as it was before, and there were questions about, you know, just different questions. And so we decided to give the council two more weeks to take a closer look at how the process was transpired this year. And since I pulled it, I felt a great responsibility to really deeply understand, and I did wade through... There were... It was a 407-page document. It took me most of Sunday, part of yesterday, so that I'm more prepared at this meeting tonight to address my concerns. And I think from here, we could just hear the public comments, and then I'll continue with my own comments. And council members will also discuss.
Thank you. All right. We'll begin with Christine Golden, then Valerie Freeman, and then Wayne Maynard.
It's nice to see almost all of you again, and one new person over there. I'm Christine Golden. I live in the city, and I served on the Arts Commission for 14 years. And for part of that time, I was Chair of the Commission, and I also was Chair of the Grants Committee as well. So I have some background. During the time I served, procedures were developed to handle grants, and they were developed collaboratively with city staff and with city council so that the direction of council went forward. I decided I'm not going to read the email that I sent to all of you. It has a lot of information in there, but it's very bare bones. I had to get it down to three minutes. But I hope it will initiate some discussion, and you might have more questions for me as well. And I want to say I'm not here to vilify anyone. In large part, I believe that this has all happened because of the massive turnover at city. You're all new. You don't have the history. I have the history. I'm not the only one that has the history, but I do have the history, and I think that you need to learn what the history is. I think people are doing the best they can, and I certainly might have the history, but I don't have all the answers. And of course, being judged always hurts, and it's important to listen. But it's also important for me to speak my truth about this, and I think that past practice has not been understood by the current commission. They think that it was just something that was arbitrarily put into place, and they don't know that it was forged cooperatively between the commission and the city. And so to just toss it aside and do a whole other thing doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. You don't have a city art department, and that's why it was necessary to come up with these practices and these procedures. Eliminating the requirement for a dollar-to-dollar match, that came from city, but this commission eliminated it on their own, but I don't think there was any discussion with any of you. These are the things I think that going forward you want to look at because it's water under the dam. These are fabulous organizations. you want to look at, because it's water under the dam. These are fabulous organizations that have been identified for monies. Go ahead with that. But then backtrack. And put your city manager and your brand-new arts liaison, I just met him today, put them in charge of doing a little digging and finding out what the history is and why this has all gone amiss, because for the first time ever, you have complaints from grant writers. So I think it just needs to be looked at very clearly and very carefully. And I don't think anyone did anything other than with absolutely the best intention. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Christine. Next, we have Valerie Freeman, and then Wayne Maynard.
Good evening. I'm former Arts Commissioner Freeman, Chair of Grants. The Arts Commission approved the updated 2024 Arts Grant Application and Calendar at their March 16, 2023 meeting. The calendar included all 2024 art grant applications to be reviewed, discussed, and decided upon by the Arts Commission at the November 2023 meeting. And this item was on the November 16 meeting agenda. The decision to have an Arts Grant Ad-Hoc Committee was announced, to my surprise and disappointment, at the end of the November 16 meeting. Whom and where did this decision take place? And why didn't the November agenda include an item for grant ad hoc for public comment and discussion? There was no discussion of an ad hoc committee to review grant applications at the five-year planning workshop, nor at the March 16 meeting, nor at the November 16, 2023 meeting. Who selected and vetted the ad hoc members for personal grievances and conflict of interest? Is it okay for ad hoc members to be doing business with applicants and sponsor their events? Furthermore, the ad hoc application review was made behind closed doors, and there was not an Arts Grant Ad-Hoc Report attached to the agenda of the December 18, 2023 special meeting. So how can the public comment on the recommended awards if the report was not available to review prior to the meeting? In short, the entire grant award process lacks transparency and was unfair. How can you and the public trust the justification of the award recommendations? I recommend for complete fairness and to ease the burden of the city council for each applicant to receive equal amounts from the total grant funds. Taft Gardens program began in 2023 and is not in compliance with the 2024 Arts Grant Guidelines for programs to begin and end in 2024, and there were two late applications that the Arts Commission will not award. This leaves 16 applications to receive equally $1,890 apiece. This is a one-time, quick-fix solution for 2024 grants. All applicants receive less than their request, and no art projects will starve. This meets the Arts Commission core values of inclusivity and impact. I urge you to move forward with this process. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Valerie. Next, we have Wayne Maynard.
Good evening. Wayne Maynard, I'm a resident of the city of Ojai. And I am opposed to the proposal recommended by the Arts Commission, because the process was decided, who would be awarded city funds, was conducted behind closed doors. The last council meeting, our city attorney advised that the process was legal, though he couldn't recall any time that a council or a commission created an ad hoc committee with only one member of the council or commission. The reason that this should not be done as a regular practice is that a single commissioner on a public ad hoc committee is going to be a voice of authority, and other members may be intimidated or feel that they have to follow along. We will never know the case in this situation, because all of the business was conducted in private. Second, I'd like to point out that at the last council meeting, the commissioner stated to the council that it was a conscious decision to use an ad hoc committee. I agree that that statement is probably true. The problem is that that conscious decision was made in a private, by the commission, probably in violation of the Brown Act, not by a commission at a regular meeting where public had an opportunity to comment. Challenge the commissioners and ask what agenda and what meeting minutes are in the public record to show that that decision was made in public in accordance with the Brown Act. I don't think it exists. My concern is primarily the process that this went through. However, I'm quite concerned that that cute little sculpture that was going to go at the Ojai Library didn't get any funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Weston, any comments online?
Thank you, Mayor. There are currently no raised hands for our Zoom participants, but we'll give Zoom participants an option to raise their hand for Consent Item 1D, Arts Grants. Just give a last call here. And we'll move on, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Francina?
Okay. First of all, I'll start easy. Weston, did you get the corrections? Some of the dates were wrong, and the word "special" meeting was missing. If not, I can go over that with you tomorrow, just in the staff report.
Yes, Councilmember, that public comment has been received.
Okay, and you'll make those changes.
At the direction of council.
Yeah, we want accurate dates, and we want the word "special" in front of the Friday meeting, right?
Mr. City Manager?
I'm sorry, I'm a bit confused, Councilmember. Can you please clarify what you're requesting?
Yes, on the first page of the consent item, there, where it says, let's see. Okay. The word "special" was omitted when the meeting was special, the Friday meeting.
Which meeting? Meeting of what?
Okay, the Friday morning, December 20 meeting was, is it considered a special meeting when it was not held during the normal time on Thursday night?
Forgive me. This is, can you point me to where we're, I'm sorry.
Okay, somewhere I have...
If I can clarify, there were not any special meetings involving this. The ad hoc committee met on its own. That wasn't an agendized meeting. But the regular meetings of the Arts Commission in the months of November, December, and January all occurred on the regular date and the regular time.
No, it didn't.
If I could...
That's why Rachel wasn't there. Nobody was there.
It was, if, Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
So I believe what you're talking about is the December 21st special meeting where they announced the grant recipients.
But that was on a Thursday night?
It was during the day. It was a...
December 21st is a Thursday, so the issue is the time of day, not the day.
It was the time of day, yes. It was December 21st during the day. I know, because I flew to St. Louis that day, so I couldn't be there.
It was a Friday morning. I watched it on Zoom.
December 21st is a Thursday, not a Friday.
Well, then it must be the 22nd. But let's just make sure the dates are correct.
It was the 21st.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Weston.
The Clerk's office, I'm looking at the agenda now. Thursday, December 21, 2023. There was a special meeting of the Arts Commission at 10:00 a.m.
Yes.
Thank you, Weston.
Oh, it was a Thursday. I'm sorry. My mistake.
I thought you were talking about the subcommittee. Okay.
No, the subcommittee was never public. Yeah.
Okay, that's clear.
Okay, I thought that was going to be real simple. I'm just, my, it's hard to get back into my train of thought. Okay, so I want to read a few things that I've learned since the last meeting. I actually did speak to three past chairs of the Grant Committee, you know, who were on the committee. So, okay, let me, okay. Oh, I want to correct a statement that was made by Commissioner Steiner at the last meeting. She characterized the process of previous commissions as not be, as being, as in-depth. And she made a statement, which was quoted in the Ojai Valley News, that, I'm going to read the correction to the statement, and then I think, I hope it will make sense. This past commissioner writes, "Our process was labor-intensive and very public. Every commissioner received a packet with all the applications and was required to read each and every one. In addition, each commissioner was tasked with taking two or three assigned applications and reaching out to their particular applicant and answer questions and notify them of any gaps or explanations that were necessary." They served as a liaison to the commission. In other words, every commissioner in the past received a copy of all of the applications. And then, to go more in-depth, you know, say there were nine, they would meet, they would each be assigned to understand more in-depth some of the applicants, but they were absolutely familiar with all the applicants. The commissioners then described their assigned grant application to fellow commissioners in an agendized, formal public meeting of the Arts Commission. This was in addition to the head of the Grant Commission screeding each and every one of them before passing out packets to each commissioner to make sure the application was eligible to be considered. For example, grants could only be awarded for three years in a row, and then applicants would have to sit out for years. So anyone who applied, you know, the fourth time, you know, those were not, those did not qualify. But the main, the main point is that at no point was this task, which involves city funds, delegated to three members of the public. And those three members of the public were selected by the former chair. And as far as I know, I'm sure that they're as qualified as any members of the public, but you know, just for full transparency, they are his friends. But there was no public, I did not really grasp this as I watched the meeting, because it just seemed, I mean, I know that our city staff liaison did state at the last meeting that the decisions were made in public. But I watched the meetings that I did not attend personally, I watched twice. And at no point did I understand how these people were chosen, the ones that were chosen, nor did I understand why the ones that were not chosen. You know, I did not get any concrete information about how their decision was made. That's why I spent most of Sunday wading through the applicants, all worthy applicants. So I don't understand why, who, you know, because it was never public. In previous, you know, previously, the commission did, had a, had the whole discussion in public. It was all in public. There were no closed-door ad hoc committees. So there's two issues in my mind. The issue that our appointed commissioners did not make the decision, that it was made by three members of the public that we know nothing about. We do not know if they, what kind of training they had or what kind of background, you know. We do not know why those people were chosen. Let's see, just let me have a moment so that I can see if there's another point. Okay, I want to read, this is, these are comments from another commissioner. Past commissioners were required and did deliberate grant recommendations in public per the Brown Act. But this year, grant applications were discussed out of the public eye, as I already stated, and the public you serve have no idea how or why some grants were denied, while others were recommended for funding. According to Chair West, Smitty West, Attorney Summers waived this requirement because an ad hoc was gathered to make the recommendations. And when I asked about this at the last meeting, I was told, and I believe that the commissioners were told by either someone on staff, that this was perfectly fine, and that it was not illegal. And the point is that it may not be illegal, but it doesn't feel appropriate. I, as a council member, you know, overseeing this, you know, I was vaguely questioning it at the last meeting, but now it's very clear to me why I intuitively felt something was amiss. Let's see, once it was, yeah, so here are the questions this commissioner is asking of the council. Did ad hoc, the ad hoc committee was not appointed by you? Were you consulted regarding what seems a significant change of direction? Did you have an opportunity to ask how the ad hoc members would apply and then be selected at a public meeting? And the answer to that is no, we were not involved. Yes, so I don't know what kind of background information the ad hoc committee received. So I think that's the gist of it. I'll let my colleagues speak. You know, as I looked at the applications, it's pretty astounding. If you look at the financials, they were required to provide their tax. And the range goes from 3.5 million in assets to the type of artist that Ojai in the past has, you know, the struggling artist who has always depended on the goodwill of the public to survive. And I brought my, you know, as most of you know, I met Beatrice Wood when I was about seven years old, and she was a lifelong friend. I met her before she was famous. We used her bowls that are probably worth thousands now as dog bowls, you know. So we didn't know, we didn't know. So, that she would, but I know that she would have fallen by the wayside if people hadn't helped her. And I know, right now, there are artists in Ojai that are struggling. What also is apparent to me is this, and it's the right of the commissioners. We appointed them. The commissioners have a right to change direction, but I feel that the public needs to be aware of it, the council needs to be aware of it. In the past, there was more of an emphasis on what I would call seed money, the struggling artists, you know, helping to lift them up. Now it seems like there's more emphasis on bolstering established projects. That's why some very well-established people, you know, last year they got 5,000, this year they got 6,000. In the past, they would get less the subsequent year, with probably rare exceptions. So, yeah, so I think it's worthwhile to take a closer look at this. And I may have some suggestions on how to resolve this later, after I hear from my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, Council?
Yes, yes. So I was the council, I was the council liaison to the Arts Commission during this process. And so I was aware of the formation of the ad hoc committee and of the revision to the process. And Councilmember Francina, thank you for making us, bringing some of this to our attention and our awareness. And also, I want to thank the previous, all the, those who reached out to us about the process and about expressing their concerns. I've thought about this a lot, as you can imagine. And I've gone through the grant, you know, I've gone through the grant applica, I've gone through a lot of the process as well. And my sense is that we need to look at how we, we need to talk about how we do this moving, how we, specifically, because it involves our funds, because it involves our, the city's money, I think we need to be involved in the process. Or not, like, I don't want to step on any of the commissioners' toes or micromanage anybody. But having it be a public process actually does make a lot of sense to me. I am reluctant to say, let's scrap what the current commission has done. I think, because it would, it would, because they have done a lot of work. And also, the people who have already been selected, I wouldn't want them to feel slighted or to feel like something, part of this, that the approval process is unfair. I'm open to hearing any other suggestions for how we can, how we can look at this year. But I do want to, as a future agenda item, bring this up for next year, and maybe even having a joint meeting with the Arts Commission, and making sure that we're all on the same page. So... So, so that's, that's my, my sense of it. And I also did, just going back to what we talked about last week with some of the, the late applications, it seems to me, I wanted to just clarify, and I don't know if you've heard anything different, but it seems to me like there, that the, that the, that the organization, I believe there were two organizations, that, that actually there were, it wasn't so much a technical challenge as it was part of the application process. So I, I was concerned that there, that somebody wasn't being treated fairly. And it's my understanding that, that we've resolved that and that actually it has been fair, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruhl?
Yeah, as the current Arts Commission liaison, I have spoken to the current commission as well as read and imbued all of the stuff that have come from past commissions. And it occurs to me, and I think to Christine Golden's point, that there was no malintent here at all.
No.
There was a lot of the same thing. I think the point that, you know, there's no institutional knowledge on staff as well as on the commission, you know, leads us to this kind of situation where when you implement a new process, you know, there's always going to be glitches and there's always going to be iterations that make the process better. It's like laws, you know, you pass a law and two years later they pass something called a cleanup law, where you fix it, you know, you fix all the things that have bubbled up. And so one thing though that did stick out to me was the lack of transparency in the dispersment of city money. And while you can have lack of transparency and you can remedy that pretty easily, when you're dispersing funds, it is a different matter. And when you're doing evaluations, it is a different matter. So it's not just that it was, you know, potentially a Brown Act violation, but it was actually what was behind that potential Brown Act violation, which was the dispersment of funds, which absolutely has to be transparent. This is city money being dispersed to Valley residents and that simply cannot be done behind closed doors. Now that having been said, I don't think that the current commission had any idea of doing anything untoward, and I would never say that that was the case. So I second Councilmember Lang's recommendation that we sit down and we, you know, with staff, staff liaison, whomever, and we really figure out, are we comfortable with the sort of change in emphasis? Do we want to, because the commission is an advisory board, do we want to say that that is okay? And, you know, also, they did do a five-year plan and they can relate what they have done back to that five-year plan. But whether or not it's a direct relation, it's a very general kind of thing, we say we're going to involve the public. For instance, in the five-year plan, that's one of the goals, we're going to involve the public more. Does that necessarily follow that it's okay to have an ad hoc committee made a public, you know, with public, public citizens behind closed doors? You know, so it's that kind of connection from what was actually stated in their five-year plan to the realization of that statement in the five-year plan. So that having been said, I believe, once again, that, you know, it's a very clear idea of what a Brown Act, you know, requires, which is if you make a decision, you know, it has to be done in public. It's really, if you have a discussion, it has to be done in public, if it's more than two of your, two of your Brown Act buddies. So, you know, that's a very clear kind of rule, you know, it's a very clear, it has to be done in public, it's just that simple. The public has a right to weigh in on anything that a municipal government does, except for very few exceptions. So, that having been said, I am, I am amenable to either going with leaving the grant allocations as they are or dispersing them evenly among everybody. You know, for me, it's six of one, half dozen of the other, I would probably go 60/40 to just disperse them equally, but I don't have very strong feelings, you know, about this, so.
Thank you. I, I just want to thank all of the commissioners, past and present. As we know, these are volunteer jobs, a lot of meetings, a lot of homework, and it can be thankless at times, so I really want to thank all of you for really putting your heart into this. And I, I agree with my council members that there, and also Christine Golden, past chair, that there were no bad intentions here. The Arts Commission made a really beautiful five-year plan and this is part of their plan. And yes, we have had turnover at staff, so we have, there hasn't been as much institutional knowledge as there will be. So I think I would, I would vote that we leave the grants as they are, move forward, and then all of the commissions, we have joint meetings in the springtime. And so when we have a joint meeting with the Arts Commission discussing this and figuring out the best plan forward. And as Councilmember Lang said, the, the Arts Commission, and I've talked to several, a couple of them, and they put a lot of work into this. And, and their hearts are pure. And I don't think it's really fair to scrap all that work at this point. Moving forward though, we can always make changes to the, the system to make it better. I mean, that's what we're here to do.
Can I add one more?
Yeah, Councilmember Lang?
I have my.
Go ahead, go ahead, okay.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that conclusion. I, I, when I first heard from three different past commissioners that under the circumstances it would make sense to divide up between all the applicant, all those that applied. And they did, as far as I know, those are all legitimate applicants, if that, if that's not the case, I hope someone will call that to my attention. And I think, under the circumstances, I feel strongly that, that seems very democratic to divide the money up equally. But there's one question, that's to do with the Taft application. I actually don't have a problem including them, but it should be noted that their application states that they start October 3rd. And there, it's supposed to be a project that is for this year only. If this council is willing to overlook that, somebody should have called that to their attention, but they didn't. So it's, if you look at their application, it does state that. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay to overlook it actually, but it's just to be aware of. And which means that the money, that, the, the figures that former Commissioner Valley cited would be a little bit less because we would include the, the Taft project. So, so everybody who qualified would get an equal amount.
Would a council member like to put a motion on the table?
That's my motion.
Yeah.
That is my motion.
Do you want to restate that? Motion? Yeah, I just, could I? Sorry. Do you want to say, say the motion first and then we can move?
Yeah, my motion is actually a two-part motion and I don't know if we need a motion to, to make clear that we want a meeting with the Arts Commission to discuss how the, you know, the, the future of this grant process. I don't, do you need a motion or just staff direction?
On setting a joint meeting, which is already in the books for some date in the future, that doesn't need a motion. Spending money does need a motion.
Okay.
But if the council wants to make the express direction to have the Arts Commission's grants proposal or grant protocol be approved by the council, that can be provided in a motion. And I see the same manager wants to jump in too, so Matt let him jump in.
You mean future protocol? Oh, sorry.
Pardon me, through, through the mayor, I just would, considering the, the history of this discussion, I would just ask for some very clear direction in a motion, crystal clear, please, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lang, did, or, no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ruhl?
Did, did, did you understand my, my motion?
Restate it.
Okay. So the, my, the first part, let's, let's, I'll do the easy part, then you can decide if you want to divide the motion up. So I do want to make a motion to divide, disperse the funds, almost 30,000, equally among every qualifying applicant. That's my motion.
Okay.
Could I clarify if that's all applicants?
All applicants.
Because two were not timely.
The two that were not timely, no.
Okay. So that would be the 10 applicants listed on page three of the staff report?
Seventeen.
And plus the ones that did not get any money because, because there was no public process that explained, for example, why did the library, which is the center, like the heart of our town, you know, one of the hearts of our town, why did they not get any? There were so many questions in my mind. Why did certain people get so much money and others not?
So just to clarify, it's 17 applicants. We don't have a list in staff report, but it's 17.
There were, so there were 19 applications received.
Yes, 17.
Seventeen timely, 10 were given funding per the recommendation of the Arts Commission.
Yes.
And your motion is 17?
Seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
And to, to Rachel's point, the people were made aware, I believe the applicants were aware that until this is ratified, they should have been made aware, that their, their grant money, their grant was, the amount of their grant was not guaranteed. And so I cannot ratify what transpired and, and, so the option is, I don't want to have to start to the beginning. I think this is the, for me, and I first thought it was a crazy idea, but the more I looked at all the applications that were really good, you know, the more I felt that that was the right, the right decision. And then, do I, I, so then, that's one motion, I want to separate that.
Okay.
And then the other motion is.
Maybe one motion at a time? So we've got a motion?
And just to read it, we don't need a motion for the, the joint meeting. We do not.
I thought that, that, that our city manager asked for more directions.
Through, through the mayor, I, I think that if there is a practice of standing joint meetings in the spring, we can agendize that through staff direction. I was really mostly concerned about what you just clarified, council member, in your motion, so thank you. I, I think I understand it to be dispersing funds equally across, across all timely applicants, of which there are 17.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could further clarify, that would be the budgeted amount, because there was a hiccup where they thought they had $400 more and in here there's a.
I'm, I approve, they withdrew that from their, some health, they withdrew it from some other, they legally withdrew it, right? They added already the 400?
No, that was an action.
The council has to approve it.
Before the council. So the budget amount was 29,850. When the subcommittee awarded the money, they were off on their math and awarded an additional 400 and realized that the night of the meeting and asked staff.
Yes, I saw that.
To take back a budget amendment.
Yes.
So it's nine, it's two, 29,850 divided amongst the 17.
But can we, what do we need to do to keep that 400?
Oh, you want to keep?
Just include that in a motion, so it's 17.
I want to include the 400 in my motion.
Okay, extra 400, great. Is there a second to that motion?
There is a second. I have actually changed my mind and will support a straight allocation only because, yes, the Art Commission did work really, really hard, but every one of those artists also worked very, very hard for a year. And I feel like they weren't given, not a fair shake, it wasn't done publicly. And so they have, I, I believe that they have, they do, they do have a right actually to have had that done publicly. And so because, you know, yes, the commission worked very hard, but these artists also work very, very, very hard and they weren't given due consideration publicly. So I am going to support the motion. I, I did change my mind. I don't, I, I think that a straight allocation across the board seems to me the cleanest and the fairest at this particular point. Nobody really loses and a lot more people benefit. We kind of wiped the slate clean as far as not having done things publicly. And to Councilmember Francina's point, until this council ratifies it, nothing has been approved or should be or can, or should have been expected, so people shouldn't have done, you know, a budget based on that. So for that reason, I am seconding it and I will support the straight allocation across the table for all applicants.
Councilmember Lang, did you have another comment or?
I, I'm, hang on, I have not thought about, I have not considered this as an option. And so I am, I am processing it right now. You know, on the one hand, I've, I worked in nonprofits and I also have served on granting committees and for several different organizations. And so I know the process of selecting grantee, grantees and of considering all of the different budgetary considerations of those grantees and the amount of, the amount that's granted is, takes into consideration the organizational structure, where the money is going, the projects that it's specified to. And so, and I, and I, from what I gather, hearing them talk about this, that the, they, the ad hoc committee look, really looked into all of those things that I haven't, so.
We didn't hear them.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. So, so I am, I am struggling with, with this because I really do hear what you're saying about the, about the, the breaking, the breaking it up fairly. Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
May I say something?
I'm going to take a turn, I'm going to take a turn. I, I hear you, Councilmember Francina and Councilmember Ruhl, and yes, it would be nice to give money to everybody and they all, you know, they all deserve it. And yet, I really feel it's important to support the Arts Commission and their decision and their process and we can shift and we can discuss it in our joint meeting in the future. I think though, once again, the amount of work and thought, and I appreciate the points you made as a, someone who's worked, who's given out grants, how challenging it is and the amounts are for a reason. So that's how I feel. So we, you know, we have a motion, we have a, a second.
I have a comment.
Yes, and then we'll have the roll call.
So the difference, Rachel, is that this is a commission using taxpayer money. That's a big difference between a foundation, okay? And secondly, the, if you look at the applications, it states, if, if you don't receive the full amount, will you still be able to continue with your project? And every single one, to the best of my recollection, stated the ways that they could, you know, the gap, because some asked for a ridiculous amount, like 19,000, you know? And, and they all assured us that their project would go on, perhaps modified, but they would, and if they don't really need the money, a thousand is just nothing, but there's probably someone in there that would be very happy to get that thousand. So that's, that's my train of thought.
Well, we have a, just one second, we have a roll, I mean, we have a motion, we have a second, let's have one more comment and then have the vote.
Yeah, thank you. So ultimately, I think what this also comes down to is whether or not an actual Brown Act violation happened. Things happen behind closed doors that should not have. And that is a Brown Act violation. So for me, I would be approving something that was done in violation of a strict Brown Act interpretation. It, these things cannot be done behind closed doors. Now, I think to the city manager's point, we have allowed public comment on them and we have gotten public comment, but not on the actual justification and/or rationale for the grants. And that has to be done. It cannot be done behind closed doors. And so for that reason also, if I were to vote to ratify this, the Arts Commission's decisions, I would be voting to, and I would be saying that what they did behind closed doors, a potential Brown Act violation, I am okay with. And I'm really not okay with it. So, so to me, that's why the allocation makes sense. It was done, it was done behind closed doors and it just simply should not have been. And so for that reason, and that will be my final comment on it, yes.
Okay. And.
I'm sure everybody's really happy. Mr. City Attorney, just to confirm, the Arts Commission did discuss the process with you?
No, the Arts Commission did not discuss it with me. I can't recall if staff did or did not. I did not go to the Arts Commission meetings. However, from all of what I understand, the process that occurred did not violate the strict text of the Brown Act because the commission itself met in public to receive the Arts, the ad hoc committee's recommendation, voted to forward it to this council, and this council has not considered it in two public meetings. All of that's legal, but whether to go beyond the mere bare minimums of legality is of course the council policy choice before us today.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Let, let's go ahead and vote.
Just to clarify, I watched those meetings twice, you know, and I could never hear the ration, there was no real explanation, just general comments.
The fact that they didn't. The fact that they didn't discuss the rationale for the decision that was made doesn't make the decision that they made in public unlawful. Whether or not it's unlawful is not the question, though, in the end, the question for the council is whether the council, how the council wishes to allocate this public money.
Yes.
And that's, that's the primary question, not the pure legality.
Okay, but can I ask a quick question? These discussions were not agendized, therefore, they were not agendized. If you look on the agendas for these discussions, they're not there. So they were discussed not being on the agenda, um, they're not on the agendas, so-
I understand that the Arts Commission vote on the twenty-first was on the agenda, for them to re- The Arts Commission's vote on September, December twenty-first to move this item forward to the council was on the agenda, that's my understanding.
To move it forward, but not to have an ad hoc committee, not to, not to decide things, not to decide the amount of money. Um, so those things that were discussed during meetings were not agendized, you know, I, I don't want to-
That may be the case, the statute of limitations on those have long passed, because it's ninety days or thirty days. Thirty days for any al, any alleged Brown Act violation in public is a thirty day statute, that's passed. So we're okay on that front, but again, the coun, the council can recommend or change the process.
No, I understand that, um, city manager, do you have one last comment for us to potentially give us some guidance?
No, I'm just-
Okay, thank you.
nitpicking, and I just would, uh, sorry, through the mayor, just respectfully request, everybody, go through the mayor for their comments. It's a little hard to follow the conversation, just please raise your hand, everybody, and be recognized by the mayor, and then speak, thank you.
Thank you, and I'd also like to request, uh, no crosstalk, which means no comments when someone is speaking. You wait for the person to finish, and then you wait for your turn. Um, could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, mayor. For the record, we have a motion by councilmember Francina with a second by councilmember Rule, to disperse the allocated arts grants funds equally between all timely seventeen qualified applicants, and to allocate the additional four hundred dollars as identified in the staff report. Roll call. Councilmember Lang.
No.
Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Tie vote, councilmember Whitman has recused, mayor pro tem Whitman has recused.
With that, the motion fails two-two under Government Code Section, uh, three-six-nine-three-six, which requires a majority of the recorded total membership of the city council to spend money. The city council membership is five, that means the majority is three, so a two-two motion to spend money, as here, motion fails. We look for alternate direction from the council.
Can I, can I give an alternate motion?
Sure.
Um, I would, I would move to have, to, to speed up the process by which we have a joint meeting, so that we can have a public discussion about the grant applications with the Arts Commission, and, and, um, and, and have the, have the, have, address some of the concern. If the concerns really are transparency and openness, which I, I agree with you, then, then let's address that concern, and, um, and at that point, we can make a decision to allocate the funds equally, or to, uh, go with the Arts Commission's recommendation.
I have a question.
What, just a second, is there, could you wait to be recognized, please?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, is there a second for that motion?
Okay. I can't, I have a question about the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
So would that include the three members of the ad hoc committee being present? I, I, that sounds just very awkward.
Can I, can I, can I spec, can I clarify? Um, so, uh, councilmember Francina, I would not want the members of the ad hoc, or I would, I would want it to be with, there was one commissioner who was part of that ad hoc committee, I would want it just to be with the commissioners, the, the ones who have been appointed.
Okay, I couldn't, I can't support that, because I, the ad hoc committee would need to, uh, we would need to duplicate whatever process they went through, and it can't be duplicated.
So there is no second for that motion?
I have a clarifying question as well, mayor, at your convenience.
Okay, and just a reminder, if you all, I know we're all very excited to speak, if you could just wait to be recognized to make it fair, because otherwise, it's like skipping in line at the grocery store, and that's, and if you could wait till I finish my sentence, that would be, could you wait till I finish my sentence?
Did I skip? That was your sentence, I think.
Okay, go ahead, councilmember Rule. Who knows? Are you, did your motion include, contain the idea that we will go back to the, to the beginning and relook at all of these?
My motion is that we would have a conversation with them out in a public forum that would present that as a question. Um, you know, I am open to starting this over, I am open to, uh, to dividing, dispersing the funds up. I would just want this to be, um, I would want us to, to, to talk this through with them and hear more of the process in an open, in an open forum.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I, I have clarifying questions. In theory, I agree that would be great, but to me, it just seems like it is dragging this on. I think that, for me, that, once again, the clearest and cleanest way to do it is allocate it equally, and then we go on to iterating the process, getting clear on all of the things that we need to get clear and making, um, making it, you know, as, as transparent as we can. I, I, I am loath to start this over or bring the commission together. It just seems like, you know, it, it seems, uh, laborious, and, um, let's just, let's just give them, give them the money and, and work it out, move forward, I'm like, let's move forward.
My, my concern with that is, what is, um, is that, what if there are grantees that we as a council would not want to support? Um, my concern is that, uh, that if we are giving taxpayer funds, that, that every artist and every organization would be deserving, would be something that we as a city can stand behind and say, yes, let's, let's do this. And I, I don't know, I don't know personally if that is, if that is true.
Well, I, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we, we pass as is the grants, um, and then, as soon as we can, have that joint meeting and review the process. So is there a second for that?
I would second that.
Okay, uh, roll call, please, Weston? Sorry, that makes no sense. Okay, sure. Well, maybe somebody changes, you know?
Yes, mayor, through the mayor, to repeat the motion by mayor Sticks with a second by councilmember Lang, for the city council to ratify the City of Ojai Arts Commission funding recommendations for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four arts grant program, and to ensure a joint meeting in the future.
I'd like to discuss the motion before we vote. My, I deliberately read every single applicant, and they were all good. I know, you know, I've lived here sixty-seven years, I know many of them, and I do not have any problem allocating the money equally.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second, could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, so any, uh, just a moment, please, any suggestions from staff moving forward in terms? Can I ask, um, let's, let's wait and hear from staff first, yep.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here, mayor, um, this is a really tricky situation, and I appreciate all the thoughtful care that you have given this. Um, I'm going to give you a little policy, uh, advice, as it relates to your advisory boards and commissions. These are, are hardworking folks that you asked to do a certain function for the city. I understand that, that potentially there were some missteps along the way. Given that we have a recusal, we really are going to have to come together here and figure out what we can live with. And I think that there's an interest to reform the process, I hear that from all of you, and I think that should be the focus. Um, however, uh, staff's recommendation, as you saw from the agenda report, is to approve the allocation. We are committed to working with you to devise a better process going forward, and I think that's really, probably, you know, that might be the silver lining here tonight, and that's, that's my suggestion, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, um, can I just, um, uh-
Point of order.
No, point of order, I'm sorry, okay, um, is there, uh, here's my question, though, uh, given-
Wait a minute, no, excuse me, I'm running the meeting.
Uh, given what our city manager just said, uh, would a council member consider changing her mind at this point? And then we can have another vote, given, and also given the staff recommendation. Um, mayor, uh, councilmember Francina.
I, I did not spend, uh, all those hours looking at the applications in, uh, you know, I, I considered my solution very, very carefully before I made it, um, so I'm not going to be changing my mind. And I want to know, uh, this, uh, I know that we do sometimes open up the public hearing. I think out of respect, I would like to hear what the fourteen-year commissioner has to say, how do my colleagues feel?
Uh, I, I do not think that's a good idea at this point, I think we, she need to, um, councilmember Rule, would you consider changing your vote?
Um, can I make a comment first? Um, so, uh, councilmember Lang, one of your sticking points was that, you know, all of the applicants had not been vetted, um, you know, there could conceivably be someone who was, you know, who would never, but, but councilmember Francina has said that she has reviewed all of them, and-
Would approve a grant for any one of them, is, is that enough?
Microphone, please.
Is that enough for you?
I, I really trust councilmember Francina's perspective, and our city manager is, so I'm, I'm hearing a, a couple of different, um, different perspectives.
Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this might not be popular, but another option is not to award any money at all, and you could simply carry over the balance and you could, uh, add it to, uh, next year's, uh, allotment, and you could have a larger pool, that is something that you could decide to do as well. That is not going to win any friends or favors, but that's a possibility that you could decide tonight.
This is so biblical.
Okay. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, just, just, um, you know, while I, I certainly respect and, um, you know, love recommendations from staff, I will say that many times, this body ignores them when it so suits them. Just want to say.
So we have a split vote, it doesn't appear that anyone is going to change her mind. Uh, councilmember Lang, did you want to say something?
I, I could, I could, I, I'm really curious to hear what a far former chair of the Arts Commission has to say, if it's a tie-breaking comment, but I would, I defer to you, so if you don't think-
Well, just remember, uh, Mr. City Manager.
So, and the city attorney will correct me, I, that, that would require opening up public comment again, so you're not just hearing from one person, you're hearing from anybody who wishes to speak on, on the matter. So if that's the pleasure of the council, you can take a vote for that, I don't recommend it, um, you know, because simply, you're going to start all over again.
Okay, so I, I, I am going to, I am going to, is it, is it, okay, so I am willing to change my vote, because I sat through the meeting where I heard all of those grant, all of the, all of the grant recipients or potential recipients, I sat through their presentations, and I was so moved.
Yeah.
And, and the thought of being able to give seventeen artists in our community something, actually, I think would be really meaningful, and it would say a lot about who we are as a community. Um, and if you went through all those applications, uh, and because of all of the transparency challenges that we've had, I am, I am going to, I'm going to change my vote.
Okay, uh, Weston, could you, uh, repeat councilmember Francina's motion, please?
Absolutely, mayor.
Thank you.
Motion by councilmember Francina with a second by councilmember Rule, to disperse the allocated arts grants funds equally between all seventeen timely qualified applicants, and allocating the additional four hundred dollars as mentioned in the staff report. Let's do another roll call. Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Motion passes three to one.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, we will move on to the public hearing, uh, item number two, the first reading and introduction of revisions to Title X related to formula business ordinance revisions and short-term rental revisions. After this, after this, um, do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, thanks, Lucas.
Good evening, my name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. Um, the item before you tonight is a cleanup item, really. It's an item that addresses the formula business ordinance that went before this body in May of two thousand twenty-three. The short-term, um, ordinance that went forward in October of two thousand twenty-three, as well as the Title X errata that went forward in October of two thousand twenty-three. Really, the, the issue that was at hand here and what's, what's, um, before you tonight for consideration is cleaning up, uh, the, the point of order in which these items came forward. So the ordinance itself, um, the Title X erased the formula business provisions and the hard work that this body had, had approved, as well as the short-term ordinance provisions and revisions that, that this body had approved as well. We're taking this forward to address those issues moving forward, so the codifiers can then, um, uh, from a point of order, have those reenacted, um, and enforced.
Thank you, any questions from council?
And I will apologize for this kind of being a groundhog type of situation, we've already seen these, and yet we're coming forward and talking about them briefly, potentially.
Okay, uh, and we have one public comment, so we'll go ahead and open the public, um, hearing, we have Vicki Carlton-Burn.
I think she wants to speak on show.
This is, this is item number two, so I think you-
I'm sorry, maybe I got the number wrong.
Um, yes, you want number three, yeah, okay, thank you, Vicki. All right, uh, any comments online, Weston?
We will give our Zoom part, yes, mayor, we'll give our Zoom participants the opportunity to raise their hand on the public hearing for item number two. There are currently no raised hands, and we'll just give it a few more seconds for Zoom participants to raise their hand, and we'll move on, mayor.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and move on to discussion, who would like to begin?
I guess I have a question, um, this is the second reading for these, right? Which?
Through the mayor, this is, this is first reading. We've seen these provisions before, because they were in the two separate ordinances for formula business and the short-term rental fixes, but the grand two-hundred-page Title X ordinance did not include those edits. So, given the order of operations of what got adopted, we lost, we lost some of the revisions in the mix. This cleans it up by bringing these two subsections, these two sets of subsections back. So you've seen this before, but it's the first reading of this cleanup ordinance.
Of these specific ordinances, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. I will too. Let's just get it done.
I move that we approve, uh, this ordinance of the City of Ojai's City Council, amending Title X of our municipal code.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent, um, ready for what, roll call?
Microphone, please.
Motion by councilmember Rule with a second by councilmember Lang to introduce the ordinance of the Ojai City Council, amending Title X of the Ojai Municipal Code, as mentioned in the staff report. Roll call, councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Whitman.
Yes.
Count, mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Weston. All right, we will move on now to the remainder of the public comments, um, and then we can take a break after that. So let's begin with Jody Lewis, then Alan Shorb, and then Bob Burke. Is Jody here? Okay.
Hi, everyone. I want to start by saying, help. Like, help.
Help by showing up in the democratic process. Help by reconvening the special meeting that you all called to vote on the ceasefire resolution. Help by correctly characterizing what happened on December 20th. I take issue with what was said earlier, that the Speaker was, was responsible for disrupting the meeting. As you mentioned, the, the Speaker was given additional time, was speaking inside of her additional time. She was a young Palestinian woman, understandably emotional and within her rights to be emotional during the time of her public comment. The disruption happened when she was shouted down by members in the audience. That's what disrupted the meeting. That's what had you all leave the room, come back and call, call the meeting off, saying that, that this meeting was sowing hate. Actually, I think it's exposing hate. Earlier, someone brought up a gun shop in our town. And I agree, guns in our town, the sale and profit of guns in our town is dangerous. And it's a local issue. And of course, the real folks in this town who sell and profit from guns, from weapons, the Crown family, the major benefactor of our town. This is the most local, this is a micro-local issue. We are funded by the bombs that are being dropped right now in Gaza. We all have blood on our hands. We all are able to be in our comfort and in our bubble because of the profits of these bombs that are falling. And not just in Gaza, all over the world. This is a local issue. And it's difficult for me to even stay up here without, with a shaking voice, just thinking about the blood that's on our hands. And lastly, it is a local issue. And I, and I appreciate, Mayor Sticks, that you said, speak on those things that are relevant to Ojai. International city of peace. Peace issues are relevant to this city. We make money, we market ourselves as an international city of peace. And then to say that it's not our place to wait.
Thank you, Jody. Next, we have Al, Alan Shorb, then Bob Burke, and then Naime, 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 thank, sorry. Tell me one more time. Naime, sorry, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Shorb. I live at 12607 Caesar Road in Upper Ojai. Been there for eight years. This is my second time to speak to this council on this topic, a ceasefire in Gaza. Since I talked in late January, approximately 4,000 more people in Gaza have been killed. Roughly 1,500 children have been killed in Gaza. I have a pack, packet of photos and stories about a couple, three dozen children. I was going to read one of these, but I find that when I read them, my brain scrambles and I don't have the capability of continuing my talk, so I will not do that. In the three weeks since I talked last, besides the people have gotten killed, several other things have happened. The International Court of Justice has found that probable cause that Israel has committed genocide. When I talked before, approximately 20 cities in the U.S. had passed a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. That number is now close to 70. Dozen in California, from little town Cudahy, east of Los Angeles, to Los Angeles itself, San Francisco, Oakland, across the country, Minneapolis, Chicago, Detroit, half a dozen in Massachusetts. Another thing that has happened is that half the population of Gaza has been squeezed into the little town of Rafa, area smaller than the area of Ojai. So this adds to the, uh, genocide by tanks, the possibility of genocide by famine and disease. As my spouse said earlier, you can't be neutral on a moving train. This train is moving fast. I ask you, first of all, to bring back the resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza to the city council. And secondly, I urge you to pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Next, we have Bob Burke, then Naime, and then Tom Francis.
Hi, all. I have lived in Ojai since February of 1988. It has been a gift from God to be here in this amazing place. I'm very appreciative of the efforts that the city council has done in behalf of the homeless in town. The shelters I passed outside are quite impressive. Thank you. There are many additional things that need doing in this town. I don't understand why the lanes on Maricopa Highway in front of Vons have been diminished from three lanes to two lanes for so long, and a number of other things on the road, on the roads. I would encourage the city council to attend to those things and not submit any resolutions regarding international affairs. There are a great number of elected officials in the Senate and the House of Representatives who are dealing with those things. Please continue to do your best to make Ojai one of the most wonderful places on earth. Thank you, all.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, next, we have Naime, and then Tom Francis, and then Elena Pascarella.
Hello, City Council, hello, Ojai, it's Naime. I've been here a couple of times before. I'm a mother. My daughter goes to Miners Oaks Elementary or TK. This is, I want to go back to what Bob said. Me and some community members helped build those tents out back. I do see, after moving here from Santa Cruz, similar problems of a town that's being just overrun by needs and necessities and people who can't afford to live there when they used to be able to afford to live there 10 years ago. This is not a different or separate issue. Understand where our tax monies are going. There's an $886 billion weapons program. The Crown family that sucks your blood, your lifeline, brings people up here to play, to have their weddings, to have their conferences, are getting money straight from our pockets, from our taxes, to then send it to proxy wars. I understand if you don't care about what's happening, that if you can't relate to the horrors that you see, whether it's a six-year-old girl trapped in a car with her loved ones who are dead, being eaten by stray dogs, and the ambulance coming to rescue her, a deal made with an army killed along with her. If you don't care about that, that's okay. But the fact that you, an intelligent person, can't sit here and see, the fact that we, we as Americans, cannot afford to send our kids to good schools anymore, don't have the ability to fix the potholes that you're worried about, don't have anywhere to live, and we are crowded together. Yeah, I have a room for you. You can't, you're getting kicked out by your landlord come stay. The reason why we're living like this is directly related to decisions being made by those people you want us to leave our lives in their hands. I have no longer faith in the bigger governments and the presidents, it's local governments. It starts here, because they don't care. It's connected. This is an Ojai issue. And you can ignore the bombs and the babies who are screaming, "Help", but it's going to be your babies, and it's coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Naime. Uh, next, we have Tom Francis, then Elena Pascarella, and then Dan McLaughlin.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I appreciate your service tonight. My comments relate to climate. According to data from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, with an average temperature increase of 4.7 degrees Fahrenheit since pre-industrial times, Ventura ranks as the fastest-warming county in the lower 48 states. This record-breaking local increase in average temperature coupled with longer extended dry periods causes the vegetation, both in our valley and on the mountains that surround us, to be drier and more prone to high-intensity, fast-moving, extreme fires. Soil biochemist and ecosystem ecologist Jennifer Sung, Ph.D., states the following about temperature rise in relation to soils. Globally, the soil contains over 3,000 gigatons of carbon, more than two times the amount of carbon in the atmosphere and all the plants in the world combined. This vast underground store regulates the global carbon cycle, while contributing to food production, biodiversity, drought and flood resilience, and ecosystem functioning. Today, we know that our dependence on this crucial carbon pool as a reliable net sink of atmospheric CO2 lessens the impacts of anthropogenic CO2 emissions, is threatened by climate change. The natural cycling of carbon between the atmosphere and land is critical to regulate Earth's climate. Even a small change could have an enormous impact on the climate, tipping the balance of the global carbon cycle. As temperatures rise, the activity of microorganisms speeds up and soils begin to emit more CO2 to the atmosphere. Increased emissions of carbon from the soil could tip the natural carbon cycle into positive feedback, where warming increases soil CO2 emissions, which further increases global warming, which further increases soil CO2 emissions, and so on. To avoid a possible tipping point where soil carbon and warming shift into a positive feedback loop, potentially leading to runaway warming, we need to take immediate action. First and foremost, we must immediately and drastically reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We should also grow more trees and other deep-rooted plants and protect them. We should conserve natural ecosystems and adopt sustainable agricultural practices. We must do everything in our power to increase the soil carbon bank and draw down atmospheric CO2. Our world depends on it. I just want to encourage the council to put more emphasis and higher priority on climate action. I know that climate action is supported by this council, but you guys got to figure out a way to get it at the front of the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, next, we have Elena Pascarella, then Dan McLaughlin, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor, and welcome City Manager Ben Harvey to Ojai. You've arrived at a very contentious time. So we're hoping that you can help us figure this out. We need some leadership here. I'd like to take this moment to acknowledge that we are on unceded Chumash land. And I'd like to honor the ancestors who walked here before us and those who are still living with us now. And I was just wondering, has there ever been a motion to have a land acknowledgement before our things?
I've, I've done a few in council meetings.
But I mean like that it's a tradition. Okay, so that'll be for another night. Okay. I'd like to take 30 seconds of silence to honor those who have left us too soon, especially the 30,000 Palestinians and the 1,200 Israelis who are in Gaza and Israel, and to their families who are trying to mourn and survive without their loved ones. During this time, I want you to think and imagine, what would peace in the Middle East look like to you? Thank you for that time. When I first came to you in November, 8,000 Palestinians had been murdered. Here we are, three months later, and it's now 30,000. My question to you is, how many people have to die before you decide to pass a ceasefire resolution? To bring it back, first of all, as an issue, and then to pass a ceasefire resolution? What is that number that's going to make you recognize how serious this is genocide and how serious it is? And that we can make a difference. We are all connected, as you say. We are all connected. And it doesn't just mean here in Ojai. We are connected to everybody in this world and we are responsible for what happens there. Not just figuratively, but literally, as we now have shown everybody that the money that comes here from the Ojai Valley Inn, this is blood money that is responsible for the deaths of so many around the world. And so just recently, this last couple of days, the Senate passed a bill for $95 billion, in addition to that $886 billion a year that we're spending, and 14,000 billion, 14 billion is going to Israel. Note that 20 billion would solve the homeless problem here in the United States. We know that problem here. Why are we sending all this money and spending all this money when we could help the people here in our country?
Thank you, thank you, Elena. Next, thank you. Next, we have Dan McLaughlin, then Larry Steingold, and then Leora, uh, no. Pardon, oh, okay. Is Larry here?
Thank you very much, Larry Steingold, voter, citizen, and I'm glad you're all trying to get back to work to the city. And those who aren't trying to get back to work to the city, please do. I want to thank you for condemning the political vandalism at the Ojai Valley Inn. How many of you condemn that? Any of you? Raise your hand. Do we condemn it or not? Do we accept it, approve it? Do we condemn vandalism? Come on. I wanted to talk about the roads, I wanted to talk about the city, I wanted to talk about where we should be going. Okay, you have visions. What are their visions? One year, three year, five year? These citizens, the roads are getting worse, the budget's getting tight. We're pledging all sorts of money and priorities and not enough money. Right? We got to start raising taxes, because otherwise, none of these priorities are going to get finished. You want to solve the problem in Gaza and for Hamas? Condemn Hamas, have Hamas to surrender? And it's done. That's what a permanent ceasefire is, it's called peace. And how do we envision peace? Well, when you talk about 78 years of colonization in Judea-Samaria by Israelis, okay, they want, they want, that's their vision of peace, is the Jewish homeland. Well, guess what? That's antisemitism and that's hate speech. So, let's call it what it is. There's nobody here crying for Somalia, or whining for the Uighurs, or beating their chest for Mali or Nigeria, or any of the other conflicts in the world. So if you're going to do something, combine everything. And you see that flag back there? Millions of people have fought and died for that flag so we could all protest and so people could stay here and say the Pledge of Allegiance. It's not to any one person, it's not to Donald Trump or Biden or FDR. It's irrelevant. Okay, we're the people. So you either, you know, you support the flag, you support the Constitution, you can support the content. But if you want to run for office, you salute the flag. Okay, you don't sit here. We are the arsenal of democracy. Okay? If it wasn't for us, we'd all be speaking German, though German's a good language. We could all be speaking Japanese or some other language, or a living some other. I'd rather be the number one superpower in the country than number two, or three, or five, or seven, or 10, because then they're telling us what to do. Quite honestly, I like being number one, occasionally. It's okay. And war is hell. But the Israelis didn't attack themselves. They were attacked on purpose, intentionally, for the prime purpose of murdering, not killing, murdering, raping.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, next, we have Leora, and then Shanti, and then Alan Greenberg. Next, we have Leora, and then Shanti, and then Alan Greenberg.
As an Ashkenazi Jew, I am grateful to speak after this man. This man who, for me, personifies the toxicity of my lineage. Right now, we are in the month of Adar, and we learn in the month of Adar that joy increases. Spring is coming. But in the text, there's another reason that joy increases in the month of Adar. We celebrate Purim. It's the celebration of Queen Esther, who goes in disguise and saves the Jews. But if you read deeper, if you read from the Book of Esther, you hear, "So the Jews struck at their enemies with the sword, slaying and destroying. They wreaked their will upon their enemies. They disposed of their enemies, killing 75,000 of their foes. And that is why village Jews who live in unwalled towns observe the fourteenth day of the month of Adar and make it a day of merry-making and feasting, and as a holiday and an occasion for sending gifts to another. Because it is the day that they use the narrative of victim to empower themselves to kill others, to make others the victim. And I quite frankly am sick of those with my lineage saying, 'We were victims, so we have the right to kill.' Hamas is a group of people who have suffered for 75 years from the Israeli government coming in and stealing their land, killing their people, imprisoning their youth with no one to stop it, and full funding from the U.S. government. Hamas did not start this. We talk about defense, the right to defend. Do the Palestinian people have no right to defend themselves in their land? They are crying, 'Help! Help us! We have done it on this land before. It's why we did it so efficiently there. So help! Will we not do it different? Because if we don't do it differently now, it will happen again, and again, and again, and again, and one day, the white women will experience it. We are not immune. None of us are immune, so help! The bare minimum, a ceasefire resolution. I know you all care, so be brave. Do not listen to this bullying. Do not bow down to this toxicity. Help us! Help the people of Palestine. Speak."
Thank you, Leora. Next, we have Shanti, and then Alan Greenberg, and then Grace Malloy.
I had something prepared to say, but I am, I just, I know that we're all feeling what is happening here. We can't pretend we're not feeling what is happening in the world right now. We can't pretend to just keep going with business as usual. This is not okay. You hear the hate in some of these people's voices. You know that that is coming from a place of hate. And you know we are coming from a place of love. A ceasefire is coming from a place of love. That is to stop the violence, to stop killing innocent children. I don't see how that is so political. How can you try and save face? That's just a simple thing. Pass the ceasefire resolution. We've been here so many times, and I don't know how you're not exhausted of trying to just compose yourself all the time. I just feel like I have to cry for all of you. How are you doing this? I don't know how you're doing this. The city council needs to place the ceasefire resolution back on the agenda. Gaza is calling for help. We're all calling for help, too. I'm so tired of this. I can't just keep living my life with this simple request. This is the bare minimum that we're asking. I don't understand how you can say that Palestinian woman on December 20th interrupted the meeting. You gave her the time other people interrupted. This is the bare minimum. People are calling for help. Gaza's calling for help, especially from people who live in countries like the United States that are complicit in this genocide. It's not that hard to do. It's literally the bare minimum. I have these photos of children who've been killed. People are dying under the rubble. They're starving under the rubble. How is that so difficult of an ask? This is not just for the Palestinians. This is for everybody. This is for everybody's liberation, and it starts here, and it's so easy. The United States is by far the largest exporter of arms to Israel, as well as monetary aid, which is often required to be used on arms manufactured in the United States. One of those weapons manufacturers is General Dynamics. The owner of the Ojai Valley Inn, the Crown family, have majority stake in General Dynamics. This town is tied to the violence in Palestine. War is making us poor. It relates to all these issues like the potholes, like the homelessness. Frankly, I can't think about potholes when there's people being murdered, but that is important. According to financial analysts, this decade will produce the first trillionaire in the United States, and that will be from war profiteering. That is how the trillionaires are being created. It is time that Ojai divest from the Crown family and their funding of the genocide. It is time to ask ourselves where in our lives we are complicit in these systems of violence and destruction, and then ask yourself how you
Thank you, Shanti. Thank you. Next, we have Alan Greenberg, then Grace Malloy, then Wayne Maynard.
It's interesting. I've attended about six of these meetings where there've been multiple speakers on both sides, mostly from the side that wants a ceasefire. And there's probably been 150 or 175 speeches on that side. And the woman who preceded me, who is an Ashkenazi Jew, I'm not sure what she's proud about. I'm an Ashkenazi Jew, and it's not some great thing, believe me. We all came from peasant stock in Russia. She is the first person that has mentioned the word Hamas in my memory. 150, 175 people spoke. Not one of them has condemned Hamas. Hamas, talk about genocide. Hamas was formed in the 1980s, and to this day, their charter states very clearly, "Their goal is the destruction of Israel and to kill everyone in it." That is genocide. If Israel wanted genocide in Gaza, there'd be 2 million people dead right now. Not the 30,000 or 20,000, the numbers that are thrown around. Even if it's one person, of course, it's a disaster. But you cannot believe the numbers that Hamas puts out as to how many people were killed. There's never been anything published about it, and their word is not reliable. And if, and if the council had made a resolution in November, how many more of those, how many less of those people would have been killed? Not one. Not even one. So any resolution should condemn Hamas for all the damage they've done in Israel, murdering thousands, not 1,200, thousands of Israelis in their discotheque, in their buses, in their synagogues over the years. I never heard a word about that. And when the gentleman, Mr. Schor, stated that the International Court has condemned Israel, that is not true. It was brought up by South Africa to do that, but they did not do that. And if the owners of the Ojai Valley Inn sell their interest in General Dynamics because they're ashamed of what they're doing, General Dynamics will still be producing the same bombs. So what's the point there? I guess they should continue to vandalize the inn, and maybe that'll convince the Crown family to sell their interest in General Dynamics, which won't accomplish anything.
Alan, next, we have Grace Malloy, then Wayne Maynard, and then Nora Harold.
Man, it's so heavy to follow community members like that. I thank you all for your time tonight and ask you to open your hearts. I'm here to continue asking you urgently to put discussion of a ceasefire resolution on an agenda for a special meeting as soon as you can. Every possible individual and municipal voice is needed to amplify the voices of the innocent Palestinian people who are being murdered by the dozens every day. Please follow in the footsteps of so many much larger cities with much larger staff and much larger constituents, seize and pass a ceasefire resolution. It's absolutely within your purview to pass such a resolution, if not because of your humanity, or because of your role as parents or grandparents, then because of the continued outcry of your constituents. To that end, I'd like to do an informal survey. I want to ask the constituents gathered here, please raise your hand. Nobody knows I'm going to do this. Please raise your hands if you feel significantly less
Excuse me, Grace. No, we can't do that. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll just say, I and many other people feel significantly less safe since October 7th. I've been verbally assaulted in Ojai for my opinions about Israel's war on Gaza. I've had friends who were physically assaulted for their opinions. Anyone who's just, who's seen just one of the videos of this very well-documented genocide that's documented by many international news organizations that are very well-respected at this point as well, or of the October 7th murders and kidnapping in whose name this genocide has been committed, must be challenged to feel safe. For who could feel safe in a world where the most powerful countries pump billions of our tax dollars to perpetuate these atrocities? Silence is a loud yes to murdering these babies, children, and their innocent grownups, who are doctors, press members, aid workers. Your silence as a governmental body is a yes to all of this. Israel, right now, is bombing Rafa, where, from what I understand, 1.4 million Gazan refugees are crammed into an area the size of Heathrow Airport. Wasn't this supposed to be the safe zone? Councilmember Whitman, please be the leader to ask for a ceasefire resolution to be put on an agenda tonight. Councilmember Francina, please be the leader that asks for this. Mayor Sticks, please be the leader that asks for this. Councilmember Ling, please be that leader. Councilmember Rule, please be that leader.
Thank you, Grace. Next, we have Wayne Maynard, and then Nora Harold.
Good evening. Wayne Maynard, resident of the city of Ojai. Tonight, my comments are regarding my general concerns about the functioning of the Arts Commission, because I've been following this issue for nearly two years. And I've witnessed several actions which I consider Brown Act violations. I've addressed the commission and the council in the past with little effect on obtaining resolution to my concerns. Because of the new public interest in how the Arts Commission is functioning, I'm going to recap those violations that I've witnessed, along with some new ones. First was prior to the start of an AC meeting, there were multiple commissioners who were behind the seats on the diocese discussing an agenda item about the AC's proposed 2223 budget. I called out from the audience, asking them to wait till after the meeting started. Second was Kira Arts contract. The agenda at that meeting, for which this item was approved, stated only that the commission authorizes the public arts chair to solicit bids for a contract. Yet, the Kira Arts proposal was adopted, and it was never on an AC meeting agenda. This touted five-year plan that we keep hearing about has never been on an agenda for public review and commission approval. They held three planning meetings, which never produced a document. Somehow, a document was produced. Copies were handed out to the council members during a commission report at a regular council meeting, but the public has no access to that document, and it was never approved at a commission meeting. Commissioner, I'd love it if you could follow up on that, because that's very important to me. The next is the establishment of this legacy city art collection. This was on the agenda for a meeting, but prior to the meeting, where it was to be discussed, the commission had already solicited the artwork, invited members of the public to attend an induction ceremony. All of this was done before the item was heard or discussed at the public meeting. There are several others, but I want to move on. I can't believe the final action at the last Arts Commission meeting, which occurred before the meeting was adjourned and was not on the agenda. Members of the commission, together, constructed a wooden crudle and awarded it to Commissioner Chisholm, engraved was Protector of the Realm, apparently in reference to his efforts of getting another commissioner to resign from the commission. I was not familiar with that term, so I looked it up on Google, and it's a wooden club used to beat a person into submission. Apparently, this is apparently disgusting. I think it is. Versee of peace.
Thank you, Wayne. Next, we have Nora Harold.
Hi, everyone. Nora Harold Miners Oaks. You know, all throughout the ceasefire discussions, I, as a healer, I felt like I really just wanted to hold everyone. But I support the ceasefire. I have from the beginning. I support an end to all killing everywhere. I believe that that is the first resolution you proposed when this was presented to you all. I'm wondering if, as a community, we are ready to hear language that encompasses a general ceasefire. We all know what that will mean. And again, I support the ceasefire in Gaza. I support the return of the hostages, both that are being held in Gaza and the hostages slash political prisoners that are being held in Israel. And I thank you all for holding the community in this conversation. It is our issue. We are all connected. That's my spiritual belief. We're not separate. And ditto on every single thing about the Crown family and the military-industrial complex. 1,000% yes. It is our issue as a community. Thanks.
Thank you, Nora. Any comments online, Weston?
No raised hands, Mayor. We'll give our Zoom participants one more option to raise their hand for the remainder of general public comments. Last call, and we'll move on.
I think there might be one card in the box.
Hello, good evening. I'm Starchild Vivoda. I'm a resident of Ojai. I don't support a ceasefire resolution, but I want it to be put back on the agenda. And the reason why is because I think we need to hear more about it. 30,000 deaths is too much. And hearing that there's violence against protesters in our city, I think that's too much. That shouldn't happen. And I think that council can do a lot to heal that by hearing out the people who want to speak and allowing them a space to do so. And I certainly want to hear more. And so I'd urge you to do that. The other reason I felt compelled to speak right now The other reason I felt compelled to speak right now, I don't have any prepared remarks, is because I don't feel I can stand silent, hearing words of anything but condemnation against Hamas. What they did was terrible. What they promised to continue to do is terrible. And when I sat and I listened, or I sat and I thought for 30 seconds about what peace in the Middle East would look like, like one of the speakers asked, Hamas was nowhere in that thought. I don't think we can have peace and Hamas at the same time. But I want to speak further, and I hope you allow us that chance to do so, here at Council, or, yeah, here at Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Starchild. We will go ahead, that's the end of public comments. We will go ahead and take a break and come back with item number three. Thank you. Okay, we are back. And we'll begin with item number three. The first, and first reading and introduction of revision to Title IV, Chapter 24, Amendments to Existing Unlawful Short-Term, Transient, and Vacation Rentals to Further Strengthen the City's Prohibition on Short-Term Rentals. Is there a staff report?
There is.
Thank you, Lucas.
Hello again. So, the item before the Council tonight for consideration is to, so I just want to just clear there, last year, we brought forward an ordinance that this body approved, to clean up some inconsistencies regarding an implied prohibition on the, by omission for the STRs. This Council then approved this clarification, requested staff review a few other matters to further strengthen the short-term rental ban that we have in our city, and returned with recommendations and potentially a draft ordinance. What's before this body tonight for consideration, discussion, is consideration on two items that are baked into the draft ordinance, and then one for a discussion item. The first item is the minimum stay, that was certainly discussed. The current minimum stay, per our code, states one calendar a month. Staff has looked into broadening that and extending that out. What we found is there are websites out there that promote these short-term rentals, and their policy is identifying 90 days. So staff has turned that around and said, introduce that as a minimum stay of 90 days. And that's the first provision that's being brought forward for consideration as a revision to the ordinance. The second is the review and the increase in the maximum fine per violation. Currently, anytime that the code is violated, and I think this body has been very forthcoming in saying, we want to make sure that there are provisions that ensure that when you violate the code, it hurts. $500 is what our current code identifies as kind of a pinch. Instead, we're looking at a progressive violation component, which takes it from $1,500 for a first violation, to $3,000 for the second violation, and $5,000 for each violation thereafter. There have been several STRs that have been violation, which have shown multiple violations within a one-year span. So certainly, the progression would immediately take it to the $5,000 realm, and then $5,000 on top of that. So it's hitting them where it hurts the most, probably, more than likely. In addition to that, there, we've, in talking with the city attorney, and working with the city attorney, we've identified that we can certainly recover legal costs. Anytime that these go to a hearing officer, there is significant legal costs, as well as staff time that's spent, on bringing that forward to a hearing officer, and those are not recovered. So we're looking to recover those costs, in the event that that happens. The last piece is not something that was baked into the code as a draft for consideration for tonight, but certainly something for discussion, and that's the fractionalization. It was brought forward as a discussion piece, for staff to look into further. We provided some information within the staff report, and it kind of tears into two pieces. One is, one is the idea from a fractionalization, which is breaking up of neighborhood, from a context and character standpoint, through the application of short-term rentals. That's literally where individuals come in, they turn it into a short-term rental, somehow circumvent our rules, and then by doing that, they perpetuate the situation, which then begins to fractionalize, or create this fractionalization within a community, breaking up communities. The interim city manager had talked about Indio as a clear example of that from months past. I've been to Indio, that certainly is an excellent example. The second piece is breaking up of, or sectioning off, portions of a single property. And that's something that, from what I've heard, is happening up north. It has not, we have not seen it here, but there is fear, certainly out there, that could be happening within this area, given the context, the size of some of the properties that we have within our community and with our boundaries. So with that, staff has included draft definitions and kind of purpose statements within the staff report for discussion purposes, but have not been baked into the code at this point, as a recommendation moving forward. There needs to be a little bit more discussion and direction, I think, from Council for that to kind of move forward. Aside from that- Aside from that, in the fractionalization piece, staff is recommending city council recommend or move forward with their first reading. And I'm certainly here to answer your questions regarding this matter as well.
Thank you, Lucas. Did you want to add something, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Two quick points to add. One is, on the text of the ordinance, the proposed three calendar month minimum stay would not apply, of course, to month-to-month residential rentals. If you have a one-year lease or an 18-month lease, by state law, at the end of that lease term, it becomes a month-to-month rental. That's not prohibited. There's an express carve-out for that if created by operation of law. And then, second, on the fractionalization point, we had a discussion of this, what, two years ago, a while ago, at the council level? And it's what we're seeing in some areas, Napa-Sonoma, that quadrant, and then also in Malibu, so it is somewhat hit south, but not in Ojai, at least not to our knowledge yet, is companies that take ownership of a single-family home, cut it apart into an LLC structure, so it's one becomes eight, or halves, or quarters, or sixteenths, sell off those individual shares, and then it looks and feels and operates like a timeshare, but legally, it's technically individual ownerships of one LLC that's the property owner on title, and they have split that ownership. Cities have taken on looking at regulating that, and the question is, does the council want us to take a look at that and regulate or prohibiting that? Our current position is that it is a violation of our existing timeshare ordinance that allows timeshares only under certain requirements and with a certain set of permits. And as noted, we haven't yet seen it because they've tended to go for price points above our current price point for most of the housing in Ojai. But as price points rise, that the overlap between our housing stocks and the companies that tend to market... target this approach becomes more of an overlap, and the risk thus rises. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Councilmember Francina?
Microphone, please.
Oh, okay. Was I not...
It wasn't. It's on now.
It's okay. Thank you. So as a renter, I think I'm the only renter on the council, when I lost my home to an investor, the typical scenario, I could have used not a short-term rental necessarily, but I could have... It would have been useful to have a one-month rental while I was looking for a long-term rental. And that's... We have to consider the unintended consequences of force... You know, you're talking about if someone wants to live... A local person, not a visitor looking for a short-term rental, but if they want to rent, say, a room or somebody's ADU or something very too small for long-term, so they can no longer do that? Unless we carefully word it so they can still do that? Are you trying to... We... I think we have to be really careful how we word prohibiting one-month rentals.
So the council can't set one set of rules for locals and one set of rules for not locals, as we know?
Yes.
I realize that would make it easier, but unfortunately, that has been outlawed. So what we could do, look at instead, would be barring... requiring minimum 90-day, three-month rental for an entire unit or an entire property, and then limiting allowing rentals of a room or units smaller than a certain size allowed at the minimum one month. We could draw the line somewhere along those lines that would accomplish much of what you've suggested.
Okay. Okay. That's just one concern. Apart from that concern, I think it's great to require 90 days, four months, six months, whatever, you know? But I do have a concern, you know, when it's a temporary jump while you're looking for something better.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Councilmember Whitman, Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
So we... You don't have to correct that.
It's nice to call you Mayor Pro Tem.
You can call me that if you remember to, but don't feel like you get to...
We're doing our best.
Yes. So we title this "The Prohibition on Advertising for Unlawful Short Term, Transient Vacation Rentals." And my, you know, my concern is that we pick up in our title the idea that, you know, we're actually not... We're not just banning the advertising, but we're banning the practice of renting them.
Yeah.
So that would just... I didn't know if there was a reason for phrasing it that way.
If I could jump in, Mayor Pro Tem, I think that the ordinance itself is going to cure the concern when I look at the title change.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought we could change that.
I think...
Okay. So it's in the...
I believe.
It's not in the...
If not, we can always add that to adjust the title of Chapter Four... Chapter 24, rather, of Title IV.
No, you're... The resolution and the ordinance do make that clear, so I apologize.
No, that's a staff error, so I don't think we should have the gender. And I reviewed it, so we didn't catch the title to match. Our apologies.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll go ahead and open the public comment, the public hearings. We'll start with Vicky Carlton-Burne, then Nora Harold, and then Larry Steingold.
Glad to be that tall. Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the new city manager. I've been here in Ojai for 31 years, and I think you're going to love it. Over the past nine years, I have identified and mapped over 500 STRs in the Ojai Valley, and I guess you could say I'm familiar with the issue. The National Bureau of Economic Research found that Airbnb was responsible for nearly one-fifth of all residential rent increases in the U.S. between 2012 and 2016. An L.A.-specific study found between '24 and 2018 Airbnb was responsible for a more than 30% increase in housing in Venice. An economic model developed by the U.S. Government Accountability Office found that a $100 increase in rent is correlated with a 9% increase in homelessness. Based on those numbers, an associate professor of urban planning calculated that through 2022, STRs are responsible for 5,000 extra Angelinos experiencing homelessness each night. It wouldn't matter if every STR in the city was booking for 30 days, if they were booking for 30 days. These houses are not being lived in. They're hotels. Their hosts are lying about their bookings, and the rest of us are paying the price in unbelievably high rental rates, real estate prices, evictions, and homelessness. This is not about a disadvantaged owner trying to make ends meet. This is the commoditization of residential housing. These amendments are necessary, but any ordinance is meaningless without the ability to adequately enforce. If the city had more effective tools, we wouldn't be here tonight. Most people I speak with don't know that the Ojai Valley has a special zoning overlay that has prohibited whole-house and guesthouse STRs since July 2020. Let me say that another way. From Casita Springs to the east end, any whole-house or guesthouse short-term rental is now illegal. The city needs to put pressure on the county to enforce those rentals because they have the same effect on the city as do those in the city limits. I urge you to approve these amendments and take up the issue of enhanced enforcement without delay. And I'll just say real quickly about the fractional ownership. It's a little different than the... than timeshare. With timeshare, you're purchasing the ability to use the property, but with fractional ownership, it's broken up into eight different pieces, with Picasso as the company that's moved in there in Malibu. They also have listings in Santa Barbara, and it's just a matter of time before they hit Ventura County. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Next, we have Nora Harold, then Larry Steingold, then Anita Cram.
Hi. Ditto everything Vicky said. I'm so happy to be following her. I can't even tell you because I can just speak to the personal experience of this issue. I can't remember what it was like before STRs existed. That's how rampant it is. You all know that we're losing our housing. So as I've been looking, you know, I'll look in other cities that don't have ordinance against STRs. You know, I'll look at an Airbnb map in Albuquerque, New Mexico, let's say, and the numbers of STRs are astounding. And I look at then the available rentals in Albuquerque, and I see the price increases even over the last few months and how Albuquerque is going to soon be where Ojai is. So this issue is national, right? Just like all the issues you all deal with. They're local, and then they're national. And our power, your power here, is local. So I am in favor of a complete ban on short-term rentals, complete. I would go that far in... Housing is... It's a right, and we've turned it into a business that is killing people. And it's devastating. And thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Anita Cram.
I support anything you can do to stop STRs. You've got potentially four tenants a year. It's a business. It's like playing whack-a-mole. You either hire an enforcement officer to go door-to-door and ask for ownership or a lease, and we start taxing STRs, STOTs. Okay? It's an income producer. If you're going to have them, they're here. You can't get rid of them. It's against the law to get rid of them. You can ban them, but you're going to have to track them down.
What's that?
Oh, Jesus.
Okay.
Why isn't anybody doing anything?
Okay. We're having a recess.
Okay, uh, we're having a recess.
Okay, thank you. We are back and we will continue with item three. We have Larry Steingold and then Anita Cram.
Madam Mayor, before Mr. Steingold finishes his comments, let me make one.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Two quick points. One, I'd suggest-
Just one second. Could we please have quiet?
Thank you. So, as is obvious, the council meeting was disturbed by members of the public. Under Government Code Section 54957.9, the room was cleared in part. The members who disrupted the meeting were cleared out. The members of the press and also other members of the public who were not participating in disturbance have and are continuing present in the meeting and are present in the audience for the item to continue. With that, we can continue it. It may be wise to, yeah, reset the clock for Mr. Steingold.
Okay. You're up, Larry. Thank you for your patience.
STRs have destroyed the rental market. They've increased rents to a point of where people who want to rent and live in their homes for their lives, most cases, some cases, it's next to impossible. So, we either, I believe, we should probably hire a part-time inspector to go home-to-home to find out who are the STRs. Because I did commercial real estate for 40 years. They're going to game the system, because I used to game it. The goal is they play whack-a-mole, try to track down the STRs and find them. Well, if you let them operate and you tax them and you charge them a fee to be in business, you can afford to have them inspected and check on them. And then you can find them and you control them. But you need to step up the game and say, okay, we're going to allow STRs. No problem. Three months, great. It's a $500 fee. We have an inspector. He gets whatever, or she gets whatever he gets, and we tax you. It's a TOT. It's a transient tax. Okay, that pays for the inspector. It keeps them under control. And that's the end of it. Okay? But you've got to, like, control STRs. And if you're going to allow them, then you've got to control them to a point of where there's no circumvention, splitting the houses, dividing them up. It's like, okay, go for it. We'll just tax you. And at least we'll get income out of it. But we've got to control the rentals, because prices are just out of sight for these people. I mean, I like Nora. I'd like Nora to stay. Okay? Where's she going to find a place? Somebody rents her place out for a grand a month, or three, whatever, three months out of time. Anyway, thank you very much, but do something and do it harder.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Anita Cram.
Are we having fun yet?
And I can, just ask, remind everyone, please be quiet so we can hear. Thank you.
Anyway, thank you, City Council, new city manager, city staff, for all your work. This is a really important topic. So, City Council needs to make changes proposed tonight with utmost speed. The greater need here is to curb the lucrative business of short-term rentals in our city. Greed is attempting to take over our community. The current fines are way too low. The city needs to implement the maximum fines allowable by law. This is hurting our community. Fines need to be large enough to get the attention of violators. As Lucas said, it needs to hurt. The current one-month limit to allow short-term rentals needs to increase to the three months. People have told me they are willing to pay a monthly rate to stay for a week or less. This makes the short-term rentals even more lucrative for the person who's the violator, because then they can get this huge amount and do it several times a month, because people are willing to pay it. So, I'm a longtime bike rider in the city, in the valley. I ride sun, you know, rain, cold, hot, but I'm noticing a disturbing trend. And that is that our neighborhood streets, particularly in the hotter months of the summer, are empty. It's very unnerving. It was very unnerving to me this past summer. It's like, where is everybody? And it's empty homes. It's short-term rentals, because they aren't coming in the hottest part of the year. It's multiple homes where somebody from Canada is coming here for the winter, because it's too cold in Canada. Our vibrant neighborhoods are disappearing. So, to me, it borders on insanity that we have to build housing while housing sits empty. So, please, City Council, move forward expeditiously with this. This is a piece of the puzzle, an important piece of the puzzle, to address our housing crisis. And just real quick, you know, after the fire in Lanai on Maui, the mayor of Lanai said, "There's enough housing here to house everybody in Lanai who was displaced by the fire." And these were houses that were being used for short-term rentals. And so, they implemented measures to get people to come forward to allow these short-term rentals. So, you know, we've got the same problem here. So, thank you very much for bringing this forward, and please, go on it.
Thank you, Anita. Any comments, any more comments here?
We do have a raised hand on Zoom Mayor, but first, we have a speaker card from Starchild on item two, but do you wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, yeah, on this item.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I rent a house, well, it's like ADU, in Ojai, in Leslie Rules District. And I have a month-to-month lease that I signed when I got, when I got the apartment. And I don't think that would be legal under this proposal, and I think that's a shame. And I'd really like to make it clear to my landlord that they don't need to rewrite my lease. That would be really bad for me. So, I please hope you clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Starchild.
Okay, we'll move on to Zoom Mayor. First, we have Teal Rowe, followed by Renee. Teal, you have the opportunity to speak now.
Hi, thank you, Austin, or Weston, and welcome to the new city manager. And I hope everybody's okay, because that was really weird, watching the meeting and having whatever happened, happen. So, my heart's kind of beating from that. As for the short-term rentals, which I, the conversation sounds like they're okay in Ojai. Well, in my experience, back in 2016, I was at the county talking about our little nightmare neighborhood because of a short-term rental. And I was all for going with the city of Ojai and the ban on short-term rentals, because what it essentially did, in our experience, was ruin our neighborhood. And so, all of the ideas that are on the agenda, are on the staff report agenda, item, whatever you call it, I'm for them. And I also am with Vicki and what Anita Cram said, and it is only going to matter how deeply they're enforced, because it's still going on. The conversation tonight, just in this meeting, sounds like they're not illegal. And the enforcement, I think, cannot be enough, because what happens in the reality is that the neighbors become the enforcers, they become the cops, and it's really, really hard on a lifestyle. So, thank you so much for doing this and making it stronger. And I appreciate all of your hard work up at the council. And Mayor Styx, thank you so much for your comments at the beginning of the meeting. It really, really sets a beautiful tone. Thank you all.
Thank you, Teal.
Next, we have Renee. Renee, you have the floor.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm glad everybody's okay. I'm glad the meeting resumed. Not sure what happened, but it was kind of disturbing. So, I'm glad you're all there, and it seems like everybody's okay. Welcome to the new city manager again. Thank you for all the time and effort and staff time you put into this. My concern is, and I understand what everybody's saying, we don't want people to come into town, buy up our housing, and not live here, and not be part of the community, and not join in and send their kids to school, et cetera. We all want good, strong communities. I agree with that. I totally agree with that. My concern is 90 days. What I'm thinking about and I'm seeing is there's a lot of properties that are owned by a single person, and they could have roommates. They could have roommates that they would be able to rent out a room temporarily, like Suzza Francina was bringing up at the beginning of the meeting, about being, and being a temporary renter until you're looking for something more permanent, either to buy or to share with other people. And those things are difficult to come by, as we know and as we've seen. So, my concern is that not everybody who has a home is trying to rent it out and disrupt our families and our neighborhoods. Not everybody is doing this. And it seems like you're doing a blanket approach. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to make an exception for renters who are living in a home where people are renting out a room in a home. I don't know how to do it, because I know this is a very complicated issue. But anyway, I just feel that, that it's, in some ways, it's becoming very elitist. By only requiring 90 days, somebody has to go through a whole different credit check process to just rent and stay here for 30 days. That seems very cumbersome and very difficult. And there are people who I do know have homes, and they want to share them on a short-term basis. Not to gouge the neighborhoods, but because they want people to stay with them for 30 days. And I'm still, I don't agree with the 90 days in all situations.
Thank you, Renee. Is that it, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, no more raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to discussion. Who would like to begin? Oh, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could jump in on a couple, two points, three points. One, to clear up any confusion, short-term rentals of property or portion thereof in the city of Ojai for less than one calendar month in exchange for any form of compensation is presently illegal. So, we've already banned short-term rentals. So, the discussion about, oh, should we ban them or not? No, we banned them. The council decided to ban short-term rentals back in 2018, and we have been enforcing the ban since then. Tonight's agenda is about increasing the penalties, or not, increasing enforcement tools, or not, and increasing the length of that short-term rental ban from the current one calendar month up to three calendar months. And on the point that was raised by Councilmember Francina and some of the commenters, I have a suggestion, if I could offer it. It would be to add, in the exception, the new last sentence to Section 4204. I'm on page, Attachment A, page four, which is also page 3-10. And in the ordinance, not the staff report.
3-10? Okay.
Mine is a three.
3-10, page four of seven?
Yeah, that's the one, page four of seven. That last sentence, the underline is an added sentence. "This prohibition does not apply to one-month rentals created by operation of law under Civil Code Section 1945 and other applicable law," nor, this is added new language, "nor to rentals of between one and three months," rather, "nor to rentals of at least one month if the renter establishes domicile at the rental location." And this is intended to pick up the situation where somebody's renting a room for a month, or two months, or whatnot, to live there. No vacationer is going to change their DMV registration, their voter registration, all their documentation to be the rental place. But someone who's renting a room for a month, or maybe month-to-month while they find a new place, when they move out of their old place, they're going to change their domicile to the new place. So, I think that captures the goal that was expressed. And that would be added to that 42404 in that last sentence.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt. All right, who would like to begin discussion? Councilmember Whitman, then Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I, so my first comment is going to be about, you know, the kind of process or procedure. I think there's a lot more that we could do, but I think we should adopt what's been proposed to us now and direct staff to bring back other stuff. So, the one exception to that would be that, kind of throughout 4-2401, we, we, so this is at 3:08, and actually, it goes, it's all over the place in here, where we use the phrase, "short-term transient and vacation rentals." I would want to add to that fractional. And then, I think we can do that without it, you know, that being okay as being a minor adjustment.
Yeah, and this is introduction, so we can rewrite at will.
But then come back with a definition of fractional, because I support the idea of a prohibition of fractional ownership that acts like a timeshare. And I don't know exactly what that prohibition looks like, but I'm, I kind of had in mind, you know, depending on where we went with, so if we're going 90 days, maybe fractional ownership would be a share of, of less than one quarter of.
My suggestion is, is we don't wordsmith that piece right now. I think-
No, and I-
Pair it with the direction to come back with the stronger fractionalization prohibition, which is my, my envision is, it's probably a new section that gets added in here. But that one, we don't need to wordsmith right.
So, I have a bunch of questions along the lines of, can we do this? The first one is, we do have, I like the provision about the city attorney having the right to collect fees and costs of enforcement, but is it possible to have a private enforcement provision that would allow residents of the city, I don't know what standing requirements we'd have, but residents of the city bring a private action to enforce this law and have an attorney's fee provision attached to that? Question, my question is, is that legal? And I'd like to have you bring that back to us.
Short answer, yes, we can add that. We did in at least one other ordinance, so we can add that.
We did that for the-
Just cause and rent stabilization, if I remember right.
Right. So, my next one is disgorgement. Can we have a provision? So, disgorgement is a legal term, which means that if somebody has unjust gain, they made money unjustly. So, like, if you defraud somebody, the money that they collected can be disgorged, and it can be the city's property. You know, so if it, so if, you know, we catch somebody doing this once, but investigation turns out that they've been doing it for months, you potentially go back and, so, just, it's just a question.
Yeah, short answer, we can add that, too.
At this point, it's just a question.
Yeah.
I have a question about whether, doesn't anybody who avoid, who is cheating, assuming that people are correct, that this is going on in a rampant fashion, aren't they engaged in tax evasion if our expectation is that we'd be collecting TOT on anything that would be vacation- on anything that would be vacation, you know, short-term rental?
Typically, yes. They're probably reporting on their federal income taxes, but they're not reporting the TOT to the city.
Right, because that would be a good tip-off.
Otherwise, yeah, exactly.
Violating our rules, but.
Yeah, typically, they're not reporting it for TOT. We can pursue that as well. I will note, historically, the council did not pursue TOT because they didn't want to profit off of what was viewed as unlawful activity. I would look for direction from the council on that one, whether to add into the mix collecting the TOT as well.
No, because then it sounds like we're approving.
Just reminder, no cross-talk. Bring it through the mayor. Are you finished?
Just about. I did want to say that the people who have said that this is really, you know, destructive to community and our housing market, everything that I've read about this supports it. I know that Los Angeles County just tonight received a report on enhancing their short-term rental enforcement. There's a group called Better Neighbors L.A. And I frequently talk about the importance of affordable housing stock. And what that means is that where we have housing that is suitable for the, you know, lower levels of our rental community, folks who have to rent, we need to do what we can to protect that. I think this is a great measure to protect affordable housing stock. And I guess the last thing I'd say is that I wasn't very tuned in to rental issues before I ran to city council, for city council. And then I learned that, you know, half of the people I represent, and I'm using a very broad term, but half the people I represent are renters. And they're all trying to hang on to a place, you know, to be able to live in Ojai. So they are important to our community, and we should do everything we can to make it easier for them and to avoid losing them to this virus that we've experienced.
Mayor Protam, do you want to put a motion on the table for us to discuss?
Yeah, okay, I'll put a motion on the table that we, that we adopt.
Introduce.
Introduce as proposed with the addition of that term fractional wherever we say, let's see, "short-term transient or vacation rentals." It'll also, it'll now say any short-term transient fractional or vacation rentals, that we add the language that Attorney Summers gave us at the end of Section 4-204.04 that would exclude rentals of at least, I forget what language.
Oh.
You have it written down, so I don't have to repeat it.
It would be add, yeah, north rentals of at least one month if the renter establishes domicile at the rental location.
And that we, that at a future date, or that staff investigate other enforcement measures so that we can tighten up and strengthen our ability, our tools for enforcing, to be brought back to us at a future time on those issues that I raised, which I've got disgorgement, private enforcement in a court, legal action, attorney's fees and that, and a definition of fractional ownership to be prohibited.
Okay, is there a second for that? Okay, great. Okay, wonderful.
Because that's what I ran on in 2016.
Okay, excellent. Okay. But, well, Councilmember Rule was next.
Am I?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, you raise your hand. Do you want to go?
Yeah, I did. You're right. Quite correct. Actually, I had a question that I should have asked during question period, but at the end of Section 4-2404, where we're adding the sentence about one month of a domicile, what does it mean, "This prohibition does not apply to one-month rentals created by operation of law"? What is the Civil Code, Section 1945 and/or other applicable laws that would make this not apply? So I don't know what that, I don't know what those laws are.
So Civil Code, Section 1945 is part of the land, state landlord-tenant law, and it provides that at the end of any residential lease of any term, if it's at the end of the lease, it becomes a month-to-month lease.
Okay.
And that's what we're protecting here is those.
So it's the rollover into the month-to-month.
Correct.
From a fixed-term lease into a month-to-month. Okay, got it.
Correct. That's the law that is that.
Got it. And then, you know, I just, do we know how many short-term rentals? I mean, do we have, because it's like, sort of, we say, you know, this is destroying Ojai. But I truly have no idea how many there are. You know, I walk my neighborhood all the time, and they would be in probably my neighborhood, and I don't see them. But I, you know, and I know that enforcement to date has always been, you know, your neighbors drop a dime on you. That's kind of the way you find out. So, once again, this is to a larger question of us not having a real grasp on what our housing stock actually is, or maybe we do, and I just don't know. So that would be one question. Do we have any idea how pervasive this problem is?
I don't think it's 500. That number is.
Crazy.
We use the same conversation for ADUs that were noncompliant. And that's just a number that keeps getting thrown around. I will say this, they're typically under your nose and you don't realize it. Enforcement is aggressive with this, and we also look for whistleblowers.
Okay.
And they can be anonymous.
How do we enforce if they're not whistleblowers?
Can I talk? Okay, I can't go into that.
No, no, okay. I mean, because basically.
There are strategies that we are using for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, we have talked about that. I mean, you know, what you want to see is people coming in and out with suitcases, you know, generally. That's what you see, you know.
Yeah.
You know, or they're Ubers, but there's no Ubers here.
There's not just one way to enforce it. There are a number of.
Yeah, I know. I know that there is, there's something you don't want to out for the people that are. Yeah. So, you know, the other thing that, you know, is, the follow-up to that question is, is that, you know, affordable housing in Ojai, I don't want to make STRs the, you know, the fall guy for this. Affordable housing, finding housing in Ojai is a way bigger issue than short-term rentals. Short-term rentals probably have, I would say, very little to do with the lack of affordable housing in Ojai, would be my guess. And that would go back to, you know, how many there actually are. Affordable housing, when you look at it, you know, it's, there are, it is 50% roughly of renters. But I've done the numbers, you know, you, I don't know. I just would like to know how pervasive it actually is. I'm in total support of it. But once again, it's just the unknown of the housing stock. Like, I don't know how we move forward to remedy some of these problems if we don't have a sense of what our housing stock actually is, including what does a starter home cost? You know, I mean, right off the bat, that's going to tell us something about affordability. If a starter home is $1 million in my neighborhood, you know, the two ones that have an addition, if they're $1 million, that tells us a lot about what's going on in affordable housing. So I don't want to make this about affordable housing, but I also don't want to make, you know, short-term rentals the scapegoat for what's happening with housing and affordable housing in Ojai. So, that having been said, I'm completely and absolutely in support of this and in support of Councilman Whitman's additions.
So I want to add one more thing to my motion.
Just a reminder, come through the mayor.
Okay, sorry.
We can, we can all learn to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not going to do any discussion. Just one thing I missed.
Just make eye contact.
For Matt, can you also look at whether we can require a statement in a real estate transaction that notifies the purchaser that we've got an ordinance that bans short-term rentals?
Yeah, okay.
I meant to have that originally, and I apologize for jumping in.
Councilmember Francina, we're going to take turns. Councilmember Lang, do you want to go?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to bring up that exact same point. But my question was, there are other suggestions that we've received from the public that could strengthen that. Are you, can we say it now rather than waiting for the future? Just as the same suggestion that, we can say it now, right?
We take our direction from the council? So yeah, if there's something you'd like us to do, please.
All right, well, I'll just read the ones that make sense to me. Most of them do. So in addition to the point that Mayor Protam Whitman just brought up, which I totally support, that makes total sense. And I want to go back to the TOT. Don't let me forget. Okay, include property managers in addition to owners as subjects of enforcement under the ordinance because both are engaged in arranging local STR rental relationships broadly public.
If I could jump in, we've already done that one, but we're happy to remind people. So that's in 42405, applies the ban to any person, including owners, tenants, brokers, managers. So that one we've done.
Good, good. Well, it's better that I.
But good to cover.
And microphone, please.
And broadly publicize this, of course. And, yeah, yeah. So that people know they can make anonymous reports. We want to make sure. We already discussed the minimum lease. We discussed broad enforcement tools. I don't know about this one. Allow for private, maybe we discussed it, but I'm not sure. Allow for private citizen suits with attorney's fees provisions, which will.
That was in his.
Yeah, that's in your motion. Okay, yeah. Okay, then the question of the, oh, of the transient occupancy tax. I think the previous council was against that or hesitant because it just makes it feel like we're, that it's more of a, we're regulating.
Right. The prior councils, and this is a couple councils ago, feeling was that collecting the TOT is profiting off of crime. And so should not instead go after with the enforcement side.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And I understand that. The council could also direct us to just hit them with everything we can and therefore collect a tax too, along with the fines and penalties and the rest of it. That's a choice.
What do you think?
Well, let's, do you want to finish? Are you finished?
Well, I just want to say, Councilmember Rule, maybe go back and listen to one of the speakers, what Vicky Carlton Byrne said about how this does increase rental cost. There's plenty of evidence that STRs increase rental cost and that there's a huge impact. I also know, because I was offered places to stay when I was looking for housing that were completely furnished. And so I know that, you know, people would be nice and say, well, you could stay here a month with your dogs, blah, blah. But I know that when I left, they were probably using them as shit, and I didn't want to be involved with that. You know, it's definitely happening under our nose. Yeah. Yeah. And those are places where people used to be able to rent, you know. It was a way for people to meet expenses, but it wasn't, you know, their mortgage or their rental expense. But it was not a way to profit, you know, huge profits. I don't know if I made that clear. Okay, that's all. Councilmember Lang?
Yes, I don't have a lot, a lot of new information to add. I want to thank Mayor Protam Whitman's, what he brought up about the fractionalization. That disgorgement is a new concept to me, and I'm very interested in learning more and in hearing what the staff has to say about that. I think that could be an additional piece of this that would contribute to the, our ability to enforce and perhaps even, you know, you know, further delay more, deter rather, more people from doing this. I have done all the, I have read all the research that articulates the link between short-term rentals and the high cost of housing. And I personally lived in a community for a short period of time, for about a year, that we saw completely turn from families and, you know, kids in school to, within a year that we lived there, being completely taken over by short-term rentals, to where everybody got pushed out, either because they couldn't afford rent anymore or because the community wasn't the same. So I know that this is going to be stronger for our community. And I feel really, I feel, you know, I feel certain about that, about helping renters and also making sure that the people who live here really are a part of, are a part of the community, that we know our neighbors and, yeah.
Well, thank, thank, and I just want to thank my council members. Thank you for all the good suggestions. Appreciate that. And also thank you, staff, for working on this for so long and so hard. It's an issue everywhere, and I don't have anything else, nothing new to add, just that, for example, the United Nations refers to short-term rentals that, you know, they push residents outside the city or to other cities. And that's clear. So we have to do everything we can to keep residents here and make it affordable. And I just do want to read the one quotation that was from Carmel, a suit and Carmel in the 90s, that Carolyn Von Driscoll quoted. "People who rent short-term rentals do not participate in local government, coach Little League, or join the hospital guild. They do not lead a scout troop, volunteer at the library, or keep an eye on an elderly neighbor. Literally, they are here today and gone tomorrow without engaging in the sort of activities that weld and strengthen the community." So I really feel strongly that we are doing the right thing tonight, and I'm grateful for all the work. So with that, are we ready for a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. We do have a motion by Mayor Protam Whitman, with a second by Councilmember Francina to introduce the ordinance with revisions to Title IV, Chapter 24 of the Ojai Municipal Code. But I would ask for the record once more by Mayor Protam or city attorney to restate the additions.
Yeah, I'll do that. So the introduction, the motion is introduce the ordinance as drafted with adding the word fractional in each use of the phrase, "short-term transient fractional or vacation rental," each time it appears. And then to add at the end of the new last sentence of Section 42404, the phrase, "This prohibition does not apply to one-month rentals created by operation of law under Civil Code, Section 1945 and other applicable law, nor to rentals of at least one month if the renter establishes domicile at the rental location." And then also paired with the directive to come back with a further increased enforcement tools. Thank you. Roll call. Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Whitman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5:0.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a suggestion because of the late hour that we postpone Agenda Item Number Four and just go to Item Number Five. That will be fast. And Lucas, I am so sorry because you keep getting bumped, and you've worked so hard on this. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and we're going to make it front and center so we deal with it right away with a lot of enthusiasm because general plan is super important. So thank you. Is that, everyone in favor of that?
Is there a problem? Okay, I'm okay then.
Everyone okay with that?
Yay.
Okay.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay, all right. Well, let's move on then to Item Number Five. Adoption of a resolution amending the salary schedule to add the classifications of records technician, deputy city clerk, and chief deputy city clerk. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Brief staff report. So before you tonight is adoption of a new salary resolution. And it's notable to add three, actually add two positions to the city and reclass one. So the new two, the new positions would be chief deputy city clerk, deputy city. the new positions would be Chief Deputy City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, and then we'll be getting rid of the old classifications, records manager, and instead have the two classifications of records technician, both full-time and part-time, um, not, not all these positions will be filled, but the intent is having both a chief dep, Chief Deputy City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk in the future would give us a greater ability to hire the position, since we'll be able to hire on either the lower end or the higher end, depending on the candidate pool, um, the interim Deputy City Clerk currently holds the position of records manager, which is the one that will be going away, so that incumbent who is with us tonight will be transitioning into the Chief Deputy City Clerk, and has done a fabulous job for the city, as you all know, and is deserving of the position, and some future projects in the city clerk's function, um, are ones that are quite a heavy lift on the document management side, and would probably require us to bring on extra help, so that's where that records technician is both probably a part-time, um, that would report into the Chief Deputy City Clerk would be quite helpful, um, so that's why it's, it's prudent to add that at this time, um, there's also some other minor cleanup things in the resolution that's before you tonight, it updates the, um, salary range for city manager, consistent with the contract adopted in the range that was advertised, it adds in the assistant planner position, which came previously, um, before you via resolution, and the classification just didn't make it on the actual salary schedule itself, um, and finally, on here, there's, uh, we just denoted that that mysterious asterisk that you see throughout the salary resolution represents the positions that are exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act, I guess I asked the question, what does that mean? So that's what that means, so, we put a little note as to what that is, indicates, and then finally, um, uh, the city manager and, and myself, we spoke to our elected city clerk, and we went through our thought process in adding these positions, and she's fully supportive of this move, and fully supportive of our, uh, records manager, soon to be the Chief Deputy City Clerk. I can answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you, Carl, any questions from council?
Do we have to call?
Councilmember Whitman, or Mayor Protem?
Yeah, um, so, I'm not clear on, so excluding city clerk from the discussion, um, how many current positions fall within the three positions that were now?
So, there's no change in what would be the city's, uh, census of employees, so there's no change in headcount, so what this is doing, it's eliminating the classification of records manager, that's gone, that's being replaced with records technician, so it's being dropped down to a lower level position that won't be filled, but something that we might need to fill for a one-time project of doing a document management system, and then we're adding two positions, Chief Deputy City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk, it will still just be filled by one person, but the thought process is, and it's consistent with what we've been doing over the last six months, where we've been adding planning positions, when it's challenging to recruit, when you have a broader classification schedule, you could potentially get maybe a deputy city clerk that maybe be a little more green, or you could get someone that has a lot more experience, so it gives us a broader swath and applicant pool to hire these positions by having more than one classification.
Okay, so if I understand what you said is, is it, um, do we currently have one person serving this role below the clerk? Wes?
So we have one?
Thank you for your service, and, um, and these, and the, and the, um, Chief Deputy City Clerk is a, um, position that his current position would morph into?
Correct, so Weston would transition into the Chief Deputy City Clerk?
And then the?
If Weston were ever to leave, which hopefully he weren't, you could fill it at either level, depending on applicant.
So then the deputy city clerk and record technician positions are just spots that you're creating for staffing flexibility when the need arises?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, no more questions, um, any public comment on this, our beloved city clerk?
No raised hands on Zoom, and we'll give you the, Zoom participants, you have the option to raise your hand for Item Five, and there's still none, Mayor.
Okay, all right, uh, discussion, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, um, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we adopt amending the salary schedule to add the classifications of record technician, dot, 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 down to be effective February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and that we offer a fabulous congratulations to Weston Montgomery, um, for all of his incredible work, and you are so loved and so appreciated, um, and so glad that you're appreciated in this way, and that's it.
And, and I will happily second that.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, uh, are we ready for a roll call?
Can I, can I add one? I just wanna add that Weston, to, to, to piggyback, you, uh, you are incredible to work with, and I am just so happy to be part of a council that is giving you this promotion at a really exciting time in your life, and just thank you for all you do, and for always providing non-dairy coffee creaming options.
And organic cookies.
Yes, and I, I would just like to say ditto to that, thank you so much for being here, Weston, we're so grateful to you, so, uh, roll call, please.
Motion by Councilmember Rule, and second by Councilmember Lang, clearly understood, to adopt Resolution Twenty-Four to be assigned, establishing the salary ranges for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and that will be effective February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, roll call, Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, all right.
And thank you.
Thank you, uh, well, let's move on to council member reports, anyone have anything to report? Uh, I would just quickly like to thank the, um, Martin Luther King, um, celebration at Matilahah, it was the Twenty-Fourth Annual Martin Luther King Day, um, and it was, um, put together by Kate Russell and Amber Delon, and it was originally headed up by Karen Bossen, Suzie Bonet, Jeff and Liz Otterbein, and for the past fifteen years, the event has been planned by local teenagers, so if any of you went, it was a really spectacular event, super sweet and thoughtful and well-choreographed, so, wonderful. Anybody else? Councilmember, nope. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, um, bring up that, um, I've got a lot of feedback from residents, uh, concern about traffic, safety in general, but with an emphasis on youngsters on motorized bikes, and I think that, um, there are plans to talk about that, and it's something that's coming up uh, on our agenda eventually, but, uh, some planning has to go into how to curb that behavior, um, but it's, um, something that we're, city's paying attention to, uh, coming from the public, and.
So this will be a future agenda item we're jumping?
Uh, I, I'm not, I, I think that some things have to happen before we propose it as an agenda item, like, you know, talk to people, like, the, yes, law enforcement and, uh, public works about, you know, what we can and can't do, and, but I think it's coming.
But before we get to future agenda items, can we get to the city manager's report? Do you have one?
Uh, yes, Mayor, just very briefly, um, if I could actually call on the Chief Deputy City, am I calling this correctly, Chief De, Chief Deputy City Clerk?
Through the mayor, that's correct.
Okay, good, thank you. Mister? Sorry.
We do, uh, the city clerk's office does have some updates, we've been, and working with our new city manager, Harvey, um, we've been looking at efficiency, uh, through public comments and a couple other things, but starting with written public comments, we're going to change the submission deadline, which is now currently five P M. on the day of the meeting, we're going to switch that to three P M., three P M. on the day prior to any meeting, regular or special, and that will give the opportunity for you, the council, to have more than, less than an hour to review all of them, and we believe it'll give the community members a better way to communicate with their elected officials.
Thank you for that.
That will be effective with the next regular meeting, and we'll do our best to update the public, if, if comments do come in, we're obviously going to accept them and educate the public, and, um, a part of that, city manager Harvey did mention earlier in this meeting, with our action minutes, we are still, we, we use action minutes, but we're still having very detailed public comments uh, in the minutes, we're going to try and have a list of public speakers to avoid trying to state what anyone is stating for ourselves, for myself, um, last thing, Kent Hall, which has been, since the city took it over from help of Ojai roughly two years ago, has been getting up to speed, you guys know this from our workshops and our meetings there, um, through city manager direction, we feel that Kent Hall is a great meeting space, and we would like to use it moving forward, uh, that will be seen by our mid-year budget review, so the city clerk's office is going to wake up bright and early and post our special meeting agenda, and it will be held at Kent Hall for Thursday at ten A M. Thursday, February fifteenth, ten A M., we're gonna have a special meeting for the mid-year budget review, so that'll be the first time you see that, and if you have any questions, please, please ask.
I just have one additional item, and that is, um, we are fast and furious trying to convene a city council goal meeting to complete the work that you already started, and it looks like early March is going to be the date, but, um, to be, to be announced and publicized, and also, all these items that Mr. Montgomery mentioned, we're going to make sure we put out there so everybody is aware of the changes and why we're doing it, just, you know, make it clear.
Okay, so, uh, thank you very much, and thank you, Weston, so in terms of future agenda items, hold off until we do the, that, that meeting, right?
We can still talk.
Potentially, unless, unless, okay, would any, okay, go, um, unless you wanna bring something up right now?
Yeah, no, well, we have already brought up the future agenda item of a tw, of possibly a twenty-five is plenty speed limit, and I would recommend that we put all the, if possible, put all the traffic issues on one agenda, and we have discussed this, it's been almost a year since those kids came behind the podium begging us to, to calm the traffic on their street, if you look at social media constantly, daily, people are being tailgated and they're, you know, cutting in front of, I mean, traffic, as, you know, as traffic gets more congested, people get impatient, I think it's a community health and safety issue that should be a top priority, and if, if we can't fit it on a regular agenda, let's do it Saturday morning or whatever it takes to get this, uh, going before some kid is killed.
Through the mayor, through the mayor, um, I think, I think one suggestion might be, since it's possible that you could be convening a city council goals meeting in the very near future, the items that you're talking about all require resources and, and focus, and I would maybe politely suggest that perhaps we have that as part of that discussion, because you're gonna need to allocate resources in order to, to do that, and I have some suggestions along with the chief to, to come back to you on how to be impactful in this area.
But, but we, but we already had it on the last goal setting, right?
The whole, sorry, if I may continue through the mayor, you didn't complete the goal-setting process is the problem, and so what I'd like to do is get the nailed down to a small number of manageable goals, not twenty, thirty, forty, five to seven, and so you can decide what the top priorities are for the next season, and that's what I would suggest.
And then I have a, a question, uh, rather than me every week asking why certain items aren't on the agenda, I don't have to do it at the meeting, at this meeting, I can do it in cons, I can come and see you, and it can still be on a future agenda, right?
Through the mayor, not only can you do that, but you can also refer to our new handy-dandy working agenda document that we distribute to all the council members, it's a public document, anybody can see it, but it's basically what we anticipate for the next few agendas, you should've now received, I think, probably two or three of them, and that, if you don't see it on that list, then that should, your first prompt should be a phone call to me or to the, the Chief Deputy City Clerk as to what's going on.
Okay, and, and if, and since we've come this far, city attorney, it was June thirteenth that we discussed this item to be on the agenda, to do with the districting rent, that a tenant, uh, anybody who's on the council, who's a renter, if they're displaced, they have thirty days to find housing, so we wanted to tweak that language.
And on that one, it was a matter, it's, and it remains a matter of where it fits in the priorities, so, perhaps, but the goal's discussion can consider that.
I didn't know that it was so time-consuming, so maybe, okay, I thought it was a simple language tweak, okay. All right, the other things I'll discuss, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember?
Yeah, I, I wanted, and this may be for goals, I wanted to bring back the discussion on the A T P, um, so, I don't know how that's gonna work, or what that folds into, um, but I, I think I would like to revisit that, and I don't know if I have council, uh, sort of acceptance on that, but, um, yeah.
Through the mayor, I, if I could respond to that, uh, I am doing some research, trying to figure out who's who in the zoo on this very topic, in fact, I've been reaching out to Caltrans, I have some very specific questions, and I do need to bring something back to you to explain where we are, what needs to happen or not happen, and, and, and really have a council decision, so I see that as separate from, that's on a parallel path with the goals, because I have some questions that have not been cleared to me from all the research and the interviews I've done so far here.
Yeah, and I, I think, um, just to, just, those of us who are new on the council, there was, there is, you know, a long history from complete streets to a complete revise, and I don't think, you know, I'm clear on it, even though we had a complete session on what it's gonna look like, it was, it was very confusing, so, uh, thank you on that one, and the other thing that I, I'm still, um, interested in is, excuse me, the two-two committee with the school board, uh, with the, yeah, with the trustees, um, so two council members and two members of the school board, uh, meeting occasionally to discuss those things that overlap, and given that they are going to be, um, you know, if they follow through with their, uh, decision, they will be building some workforce housing, and, you know, it's good for us to understand, um, what the implications are for that, and what the new laws are, housing laws around workforce housing for educational institutions, things like that, so I would like to, uh, move that forward, given that they are moving forward, thank you.
So I have, I have two, I was, I was gonna wait and talk about this at the prayerary sitting, but I wanna just put it into the conversation that, um, that I'm the liaison of the H P C, and the, and there was a request to talk about, um, the structures of merit in our code, so I just wanna propose that as a, as a future agenda item, and then also, uh, I wanna propose for our goal-setting and for our future agenda, looking at, uh, climate mitigation and decarbonization of our city buildings.
Great, okay, well.
Just a comment, I really like the changes that Weston announced, uh, particularly maybe educating the public, that if we don't get comments, I mean, I'm driving from five to six, so if we get, think, something published at five, I don't really get a chance to read it, um, so, I really appreciate that we're gonna make that change, uh, I really appreciate the advanced calendars that we're receiving, it helps, uh, to, you know, just to have a little snapshot focus, and, uh, I assume our, our new city manager has been instrumental in both of those things, along with Weston, so I'm, I'm very happy to see that, um, those changes.
Thank you very much, thank you, well, on that note, ready to adjourn?
We're just, Weston, you did assure us that until people get used to it, maybe give them time to get used to the new deadline, right?
It's a good question, we, we will compile the written public comments we receive the day prior, but there's going to be a learning curve, and we will, everything will be included.
Yeah.
And the other thing on note, just for the record for anybody who may be concerned, we'll still read everything, it's about what gets distributed to council before the meeting, if you send us something right before the meeting, it's not that it gets thrown away, it gets read, but there won't be time to get it to council right before the meeting.
Yes, that's very good, yeah.
We're never gonna throw away any comments, it's just where, how it gets processed.
Okay, well, thank you all for a very productive meeting, and we are adjourned.